I'd like to bring the meeting to order. The Wilmington City Council, I'd like to welcome all those who are with us this evening and all those who are watching us at home. Thank you for taking an interest in your government. At this time, I'd like to introduce Sergeant Ronald Evans of the Wilmington Police Department. If you'll please come forward to give our invocation if everyone will stand, remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Sergeant, welcome.
Good evening. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, first and foremost, we thank you for this day. As always, we thank you for your continued grace and your continued mercy that you bestow upon us day in and day out. We thank you for your love. We ask for your protection from the seen and the unseen. We thank you for this council and their staff, and we ask that you continue to give them the wisdom to make the decisions, good decisions, for the citizens of Wilmington. We pray this prayer in your son's precious name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have several presentations this evening. Most importantly, first presentation is to recognize our new city manager, Ms. Becky Hawk. Becky, this is your first meeting as our new city manager, and we've had, she's replacing Mr. Tony Cottle, who's retired, and so it's an honor to have you here tonight, obviously, and I think you have your father with you, and so I'm going to be doing the swearing and ceremony at this time.
I, Rebecca Hawk, do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States, and that I will support and maintain the Constitution laws of the state of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as city manager, under the council-manager form of government, for the city of Wilmington. So help me God. Congratulations.
He asked me if I wanted to say anything. I just wanted to thank the council once again for this opportunity. I have already had a chance to meet a number of staff and citizens, and there's many more to meet, but it's been tremendous so far. I'm so excited to be here. This is a fabulous city with so much to offer, and I look forward to working with our tremendously talented staff under the direction of council to make it even better. So thank you so much for the opportunity, and I look forward to being here for a very long time. Thank you.
Next, I would like to recognize our interim police chief, who used to be our former police chief, Ralph Evangelis. If Ralph will please come forward. There we go. Swipes it.
Place your left hand, raise your right hand, sir. Sorry about that. I, Ralph Evangelis, do solemnly swear that I will be alert, vigilant, to enforce the criminal laws of this state, that I will not be influenced in any manner, on account of personal bias or prejudice, that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States, and the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and execute the duties of my office as interim police chief, according to the best of my skill, abilities, and judgment. So help me God. Congratulations.
Next, I'd like to recognize the Wilmington 101 class of 2025. If everybody will come forward with that class. Everybody step up here. Who's the spokesperson for this class? Anybody? Of course, that's what I like. I like to hear that. Okay. Everybody get in here closer. Okay. First, I just want to say to all of the folks that participated in this class, I'm sure you got something out of it, and this is something that I wish every citizen had the opportunity to participate in because it gives you significant insight into the workings of local governments, interacting with state governments, interacting with federal governments, and what our roles are and what our challenges are as a city and as a community, and how we meet those challenges. But also included in that is, of course, understanding the private sector, how it interacts with the public sector, and all of the issues that we all deal with in southeastern North Carolina, from tourism to the economy, to our environment, to our, to obviously, to the building trades, to everything that happens in our community. This is an important class, and I'm just glad that you folks took the time, as citizens, to participate in it because it means that you care about your communities, you care about your government, and the more that people understand what governments do at different levels, it makes all of our jobs easier. May not always agree, but I can tell you one thing, you'll know where we're coming from. So thank you. So I'm going to read this recognition. Excuse me, I forgot my glasses. You get a certain age, you have to wear these dang on things. Recognition of the Wilmington 101 class of 2025, whereas Wilmington 101 is designed to educate, engage, and empower residents by deepening their understanding of local government and community challenges with the goal of developing informed, motivated leaders committed to the betterment of Wilmington. And whereas the program includes six interactive sessions covering topics such as recreation and urban forestry, public safety, planning and transportation, sustainability and emergency operations, affordable housing, and leadership grounded in community advocacy. And whereas Wilmington 101 serves as a catalyst for civic involvement by preparing participants to be informed, advocates, and encouraging service on local boards, commissions, and in other leadership roles. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wilmington City Council recognizes the members of Wilmington 101 class of 2025 for their dedicated dedication to civic learning and their engagement with the work of the city government. I just want to say congratulations to all, and I know that we have a certificate to everybody here. Our first participant is Bradley Cotton. Bradley's right there. Bradley's right behind me. Bridget Tarrant. Is Bridget? There you go, Tarrant. Carol Atwood. Carol, there you go. Hey, Carol. Good to see you. Chuck Ball. Is Chuck here? There you go, Chuck. Good to see you. David Allen. There you go. Deana Hamilton. There, we got right here. Jonathan Berger. There's John. Kelly McConnell. There's Kelly. Michael Goodson. Sharice Brown. Sharice here. Susan Sabatini. Ah, I think I pronounced that right. Tim Ware. And Trey Tate.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We appreciate the honor of being recognized for learning more about what you all do and how everyone comes together to make this city what it is, and we look forward to continuing to participate in meetings such as this and volunteer service on boards, commissions, whatever the good Lord has in store for us down the road. And thank you for your time and service.
Thank you for your time and service. Thank you, everybody. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Hey, guys, let's do a picture real quick. Real quick. We just got a picture very much. One more picture. This, I'd like to recognize Becky Hawk, who will do a presentation for July as Parks and Recreation Month. It's Becky Hawk. Becky, I'm sorry.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We will actually have Amy Beatty, our Parks and Recreation Director. She will be providing a short video and also introducing some of the staff that we have with us tonight.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor, present, and city council. Staff decided to depart from the usual reading of a proclamation celebrating Parks and Recreation Month and instead run a very short video that highlights the hard work that Parks and Recreation staff does every day to provide programs and services for our citizens, which we could not do without the support of city council and our residents. So with that, we'll run the video.
... celebrating National Parks and Recreation Month, and Wilmington's Parks and Recreation Department is proud to play a vital role in enhancing the quality of life in our city. We offer a wide range of inclusive programming, from nature events to art camps to senior activities. There's the Special Olympics and major city events like the Holiday Parade. There are more than 40 parks, 32 miles of trails, 34 multipurpose athletic fields, 13 softball and baseball fields, including one Miracle Field, four recreation centers, three pools, two golf courses, two amphitheaters, and one skate park. In the past year, we've celebrated the opening of the Encino Sports Park, new playgrounds at Maids and Halliburton Parks, our first dedicated pickleball courts at Greenfield Park, the expansion of the MLK Community Center, and the groundbreaking of improvements at Olson Park. Please help us in celebrating everybody in the Parks and Recreation Department who works so hard to help Wilmington play, grow, and connect. Thank you for all that you do.
And as our city manager said, we have some members of staff here from our leadership positions to, I know I saw our muni director, David Donovan, back there, and course superintendent Mass Smith. We've got folks from MLK Community Center, and I'm not going to name any more names because I'm missing others, I'm sure, but I'll ask them to stand and be recognized. Thank you.
You know, I'm sorry.
Amy, Amy, I just want to say thank you and congratulations to you and staff for doing a great job. We've been getting a lot of stuff done here lately, and I was a little concerned in that video you were going to show Mayor Pro Tim hitting the shot before me at the ribbon cutting, but the picture that you had was way better than him hitting the shot. So thank you. Kudos to whoever did that. I'm loving it.
Very astute video, too.
Amy, thank you, and I just want to say thank you to the entire staff. I know how hard you folks work and the demands on each and every one of you to make the recreation part of our community so great, and I just want to say thank you. I know the work is never done. It's always something that we need to do. There's always something that we need to improve, always need to expand in some capacity, but I just want to say you folks do a phenomenal job, day in and day out. And I've been to a lot of events in all the different parks and places that the city owns, and it's magnificent, the work you folks do. So just thank you for your public service in this great city. Thank you.
You're welcome, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next order of business is our consent agenda, items one through 12. Are there any items that any council member would like to hear separately? If not, what are the wishes of this council? We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Andrews, second by Councilmember Ravenbar. Discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously. That brings us to our next item of business, which is our public information segment. We have one, two, three, four, five, six speakers that have signed up to speak with us this evening. Each speaker will be allotted five minutes. Our first speaker is Mr. Herbert Hakeem Copeland, who will be speaking to us about presidential order on royalties of the land and government business. Mr. Herbert here? Okay. Our next speaker is Mr. Patrick Matthews, the State of America homelessness and the Israeli occupation. Is he here? Okay. Our next speaker is Mr. Arlis Donovan, concerns of the Wrightsville Sound community surrounding the Galleria site on Wrightsville Avenue.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor and council, thank you for your time and attention. I'm Andy Donovan, representing Galleria Watch. I live at 6723 Cable Car Lane. My backyard is 200 feet from this job site. To say that I've been affected is an understatement. It's rendered our backyard and garden unusable during the day, and our house continues to shake all day, every day, except Sunday. But I digress. That's not why I'm here, but I had to get that in there. The reason I'm here is because of what you see on your screen. You'll probably recognize this is Wrightsville Avenue and the trees that once lined Wrightsville Avenue. And what this has done is that when we witnessed this, it spurred us to action. To say this was shocking is an understatement. The emotions ran the gambit from shock to sadness to anger, and it isn't just from the people in this immediate area. We have heard this from people all over Wilmington. How could this happen? So this spurred us to action. We feel like that we have to do something. What we're talking about is the Haven at Galleria. As you'll see it in the center of your picture there, it's adjacent to Wrightsville Avenue. It's in the middle of a predominantly residential area. It does have a fair amount of commercial with the Harris Teeter and Lumen Junction, but everything in this area is to scale, is attractive, and architecturally pleasing, and we feel like that this community has benefited from this, and we're proud of it. The roads are affected, of course, Wrightsville Avenue. This site will have three entrances and exits, all under Wrightsville. Right now, with the current traffic situation, especially in the summer and every weekend, getting on a Wrightsville Avenue can be a challenge, especially if you want to turn left from either direction. One of our main concerns is that the people of this neighborhood are going to attempt to turn left and not be able to if they want to turn left on a Wrightsville. So they're going to turn right, and they're either going to go down to Eastwood Road, or if they want to get on Wrightsville Avenue west of Military or Eleander, they're going to turn right on Stokely, which is a residential street, and that's going to take them to Airley Road, a North Carolina scenic byway. This road has a speed limit of 25 miles an hour. It is a very small road. I know all of you have been on it. It's also a right away for bicycles. Bicycles can take the lane on this road. This road is not equipped to handle any more traffic than it already does. The other streets that are going to be affected are Allen's Lane and Jones Road. Neither of those roads are paved, but they're going to handle a very increased amount of traffic once this project is inhabited. So the in-season and weakened traffic on Wrightsville, and for all of us that live off of it between Military and Eastwood, we know this, it's already at capacity. The outdated and, we feel, irrelevant traffic study done in 2022 was done under conditions that do not mirror reality in any way. They were done at the end of COVID. They were done by the state's mandate, have to be done during school hours, which takes summer out of it, and has to be done at a time intervals that would reflect an average traffic flow. Well, the times are usually mid-morning and mid to late afternoon, and much of those times are not average on this road. According to the developers' traffic impact analysis, this site is going to add 2,750 extra trips to Wrightsville Avenue every day. Using the developers' and NC DOT's numbers, if we do a little simple math, we can see between 6:00 AM and 9:00 PM, which a majority of these trips will be made, that's going to add a vehicle to Wrightsville Avenue every 15 seconds. So at this point, Wrightsville Avenue can't take it. So the things we have accomplished to date, what spurred us to action, on social media, we simply put out a message for anyone concerned about what had just happened on Wrightsville Avenue, to come to Waterman's, let's talk about it. We ended up with 50 people there, and the development company sent two people because they saw our announcement. After that, we had many follow-up emails with Johnson's Director of Construction, who was at that meeting. He was one of the people there. Our next meeting we had scheduled was with city planning and traffic. This meeting was to hopefully give us some insight on what's happening because the last thing, truly, the last thing that anyone in this neighborhood heard about this site was in 2018. Since 2018, there has been zero communication about what's happening here, and the only way you'd have known, and shame on us for not doing this, was to stay on your websites and by planning's admission, the developer did everything they should do. They did everything right. Planning and traffic did everything they should do, and pertaining to the requirements of state DOT, all requirements were met, as far as they're concerned. With this, after this meeting, we put on change.org a petition, which we will see in a moment, but it currently is at 1,700 signatures, and that's been garnered in the last 14 days. We also...
No, I was just saying, because you've gone over the time by minute, and that's fine, so just...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just to wrap it up.
Okay. We have also got support from Cape Fear Alots of Trees, and then, of course, today, here we are, addressing you. This is our splash page on change.org. This is what people see when they go there to sign. This was taken this morning. This is how many more signatures have been, 188 more since this morning. So Phase 1 and Phase 2 are currently approved. They're under construction. We know that. We cannot affect anything relative to that. What we hope to be able to affect is the third phase. Construction's approved. Things are approved. There has been no plan submitted for this site. So at this point, what they want to propose is another 160 units on this small site, and if you're familiar with it, it's the old trailer park, which is behind the ABC store. This site is not capable of handling that many dwellings as well as two parking spaces for each site. What you see here are the four elevations of the building that's being built right now, and we frankly cannot understand how anybody associated with this city, and especially considering the area this is going into, could consider this a plausible project for that site. It's enormous, it's out of scale, and frankly, most of us think it's pretty ugly.
Mr. Donovan, I'm going to have to have you to wrap it up because...
Okay. Here's our petition. Number two is the one thing that we want to propose. We feel like another traffic study is warranted to better reflect what is happening there. I want to also go down to number five, which, since our meeting with city planning, we understand that has been changed. This was the loophole that allowed developers to only get by with 1% commercial on mixed units. We understand that has been done, though we've yet to see any evidence of that. This is just a detail of that number two, which is asking for more traffic analysis. So what we're asking for is a traffic analysis that's going to include existing and future construction projects in the immediate area. There are six other projects within a mile of the site. There are also two major transportation projects planned, the flyover ramp at Eastwood and Military, as well as Wrightsville Beach drawbridge. Both of those are going to drastically affect traffic on Wrightsville Avenue, and especially the flyover because they're going to have to squeeze that lane. It's going to cause a lot of traffic. We're going to be...
Sir, I'm sorry, your time is up, but I'm sorry, you've gone over twice.
Okay. One more thing. The trees that exist on the site, we would propose that we change this to a park. There are no parks in this area, zero. So what we're requesting is traffic study and a tree study to be given to technical review committee that is going to be reviewing site number three. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Ms. Susan McLean. Ms. Susan McLean here? Ms. Susan McLean? Okay. Mr. John Martel will be speaking to us about healthcare quality in the Lower Cape Fear.
Mayor Saffo and esteemed council members, my name's John Martel. I'm a retired physician, and I am the founder of the Cape Fear Five Star Project. I am here to talk about hospital quality here in Wilmington. I have been here before on this subject. First, before I launch into the heart of this subject, I want to say, if you or anyone you know has symptoms of a heart attack or symptoms of a stroke, they should never hesitate to call 911. Novant New Hanover Regional Medical Center has certified stroke and heart attack programs that will save lives. That being said, there are issues with hospital quality in this town. In 2020, when Novant was seeking to purchase New Hanover Regional, they made promises to our community that it would be a high-quality hospital, that they would make every effort to bring it into the top 10% of hospitals nationwide. That's 2020. In 2022, when Medicare almost shut the hospital down because of immediate jeopardy to patients' health and safety... Ms. Susan McLean? Okay, Mr. John Martel will be speaking to us about healthcare quality in the Lower Cape
Mayor Saffo and esteemed council members, my name's John Martel. I'm a retired physician, and I am the founder of the Cape Fear Five Star Project. I am here to talk about hospital quality here in Wilmington. I have been here before on this subject. First, before I launch into the heart of this subject, I want to say, if you or anyone you know has symptoms of a heart attack or symptoms of a stroke, they should never hesitate to call 911. Novant New Hanover Regional Medical Center has certified stroke and heart attack programs that will save lives. That being said, there are issues with hospital quality in this town. In 2020, when Novant was seeking to purchase New Hanover Regional, they made promises to our community that it would be a high-quality hospital, that they would make every effort to bring it into the top 10% of hospitals nationwide. That's 2020. In 2022, when Medicare almost shut the hospital down because of immediate jeopardy to patients' health and safety, John Gisdick, then the president of the hospital, told WHQR that there were issues, but they were being addressed. In 2024, when the hospital was downgraded by the Leapfrog Quality Group, it's an independent quality rating organization, was downgraded from a B grade to a C grade, then President Ernie Bovio spoke to me personally and said that quality improvements were being made. In 2025, when Leapfrog once again rated the hospital AC for hospital safety and quality, the new president, Dr. Lori Whelan, told WHQR that improvements were being made, and we should see the results within the next couple of years. I repeat, within the next couple of years. Are we done waiting yet? The Five Star Project has a petition out to the county commissioners, asking them to gain clarity and accountability for the promises that were made in the sales contract. That petition has 3,200 signatures and going. We will present it to the county commissioners on September 2nd. I know this is not something that is within the direct authority of the city council, but it is your constituency that are hurting, that are scared, and that are frankly angry. These commissioners are your political colleagues. You work with them all the time. You have the right on a collegial level to go to them and say, listen, enough is enough. It's time to fix this. Get Novant to the table. Let's get this public, and let's get some accountability. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Next speaker is Ms. Crystal Lee, Companion Animal Welfare Ordinances. Ms. Lee here?
She is, thank you.
Blessings. Thank you for your time and dedication as our representatives. Wilmington is known as a dog-friendly community and destination. Currently, North Carolina has the second-highest euthanasia rate of healthy dogs and cats in the nation. In 2024, New Hanover County taxpayers funded euthanasia for 343 local dogs and cats. Obviously, this is unacceptable, and enhancement of companion animal welfare legislation is needed immediately. I have to breathe, sorry.
Go ahead.
We desire your bipartisan support to expedite a city ordinance prohibiting North Carolina General Statute 19A-27, retail sales of dogs and cats in Wilmington. Last week, Governor Stein vetoed House Bill 96 due to a Senate Judiciary Committee member adding a provision, 19A-27.5. This would have taken away power from North Carolina's citizens and government representatives in counties, cities, and towns to prohibit these stores. Quoting Governor Stein, "This legislation originally addressed squatters, and I supported it. At the last moment, however, unrelated amendment was added that prohibits local governments from regulating pet stores," said Governor Stein. "This bill would facilitate inhumane puppy mills in North Carolina. Without this provision, I would have signed the legislation. With it, I cannot support it." The AKC and reputable breeders code of ethics prohibit sales of bred offspring to pet shops. We have factual evidence. The Puppy Place in Wilmington off New Center Drive is importing out-of-state dogs from inhumane puppy mills. Numerous suppliers have received multiple USDA violations for negligence and cruel conditions. For example, one supplier to the Puppy Place had 196 breeding dogs with 173 puppies on site, and another one with 13 violations in one year. The ASPCA has documented the USDA failed to act in response to 90% of animal welfare violations in 2023. Puppy mill offspring have health concerns, behavioral issues, and it supports unethical practices. The CDC and NIH, Center for Disease Control and National Institute of Health, have documented 168 cases of antibiotic-resistant diseases linked to these puppies, resulting in human illness and hospitalizations across 18 states. I am a nurse, and this is a public health and safety concern. North Carolina General Statute 153A-127 states, "A county made by ordinance define, regulate, prohibit, or abate acts or conditions detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of its citizens and the peace and dignity of the county." North Carolina General Statute 160A-194 gives cities the authority to regulate and prohibit businesses in regards to the previous statute. Shelters and nonprofit animal organizations are overwhelmed throughout the state and locally. We have over 20-plus 501(c)(3) animal resources in New Hanover County. Lack of legislative priority and outdated animal ordinances are drastically and negatively impacting our community. I beg of you, my representatives, to please take honorable action prior to elections on behalf of your constituents. Please set the precedence for change to acceptable and humane treatment towards our companions. Thank you for your time, and God bless you all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, and I believe that Mr. Copeland, Mr. Herbert Hakeem Copeland is here?
Good afternoon.
I am King Hakeem, Your Majesty. I came in today to... Yeah. I came in today to speak on the order on behalf of the presidential administration, honoring with royalties for the royal family here residing in Wilmington. There was supposed to be an appointment set up with Ms. Dawn. I have not been able to get an appointment set up, so I came in today to speak.
Okay.
Yes.
Go ahead, speak.
So I am looking for an appointment, so I may come in and speak with you, Mayor, on the honoring on the royalties.
What royalties are we talking about, sir?
This would be the royalties of the land for the royal family here, honoring with the presidential order that was sent down from the presidential administration.
Of what administration, sir?
The presidential administration of the United States of America.
Okay.
Sir, if you could move that microphone up to your mouth where we can...
Yes. Good. So I came in one time and spoke with you before about the situation, and you asked me to set up an appointment with Ms. Dawn.
Yeah.
I have been trying to reach out with Ms. Dawn. I have not been able to get in contact with her. I came in one more time on, there was a private sector that was due, I have been online with you myself, so may you...
I don't know, I don't know that, I'm sorry, sir, but I do not know the proclamation or the royalties that you're talking about, and if you'd like to set up an appointment, if you just get with Mrs. Sidney Sidbury right here, and we will have a talk with you, but I have no idea what you're talking about, sir, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay.
And as I said, I am King Hakeem, Your Majesty.
Okay, thank you.
And he says, set up an appointment with...
Yeah. Mrs. Sidbury. Okay. All right. All right, this concludes this segment of our meeting. Our next item of business, our public hearings. Item PH1 is an ordinance amending the official zoning maps of the city of Wilmington to rezone property containing 2.08 acres located at 3606 Market Street from ONI Office and Institutional District to CS Commercial Services District. And just I'd like to recognize our city manager, Ms. Becky Hawk, for our staff presentation. Ms. Hawk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item will be presented by our planning director, Linda Painter.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and members of council. This is public hearing one, a general zoning for 3606 Market Street. The site is located on the south side of Market Street, east of Darlington Avenue. It is approximately two acres in size and is currently occupied by Nurish NC, a nonprofit warehouse and food distribution center. This map shows the site within the surrounding area and includes a photo of the subject property. The site is surrounded by commercial uses, including a hotel, restaurant, car wash, and vehicle sales. The site is bordered by ONI zoning to the south and west, and CS zoning to the north and east. The applicant proposes to rezone the site from the existing ONI district to a CS Commercial Services district. This slide provides a little bit of a background on this, on this request. Nurish NC was originally approved in December of 2020 as a social services use, which was permitted by right in the ONI district, and at that time, social service uses allowed warehousing and distribution. In December of 2021, when we updated the Land Development Code, social services as a separate use was eliminated, and it was grouped under the office use. The warehousing and distribution use that was associated with Nurish NC then became a legal non-conforming use in the ONI district. In January of 2025, Nurish NC submitted expansion plans, and at that point, we realized that it was a non-conforming use, and so they submitted a rezoning application to, to a CS district, which would allow the warehousing and distribution use that currently exists. This slide identifies the comprehensive plan, maps, and applicable policies for the district. The subject site is identified as with being within a suburban commercial retrofit area of opportunity along a major corridor and within urban mixed-use center on the comprehensive plan growth strategies map. The plan promotes a mix of uses and pedestrian-scale development in these areas. The CS zoning designation is intended to accommodate intense commercial uses that are generally considered to be inconsistent with the development pattern outlined in the plan. The proposed general rezoning would allow by right uses that would not be appropriate in this location, such as manufacturing, industrial laundry services, and outdoor storage. Staff does not believe that the unconditioned rezoning is consistent with the desired development pattern of the area. Staff believes the proposed zoning amendment is not consistent with the comprehensive plan and is recommending denial. The Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request at their June meeting. And I do want to add, this is, this is an application that quite frankly, we have struggled with from the beginning, because what they are proposing to do is, is minor, but this really comes down to the policies of the plan and a general rezoning to commercial services and the uses that could be permitted in the future.
So this is, this is just a simplistic question, and I'm sure that city attorney will correct me on this. Why could we not have used a special use permit in this particular situation, understanding this is Nurish NC? These people have worked long and hard to build that facility there. They're asking for a little improvement so they can store food, and we're having to go through a whole rezoning process so they can get what they need done. And I think this is one issue that I think we could have used this personally, is going with the special use, and it would have been fine. But I don't understand why they, why that wasn't done. And I understand you guys have a lot of concerns about the CSS zoning. These people are going to be there for a while, but that's just my take on it. And this is a good example of why we also need to be very careful about eliminating that kind of stuff, because this could have been very easily fixed tonight, instead of going through a whole rezoning process. So just being a little candid about it, that's it. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I have a question. You mentioned one of the concerns that staff had was future use. Can you elaborate for me?
Yes. So this gives you, these are the types of uses that are allowable in the CS district that are not allowed in the ONI district. And so when you look at some of those in terms of heavy equipment sales, rentals and services, contractor storage yards, outdoor storage, those are the types of uses that in the future would give us an issue. We don't have an issue with Nurish NC and what they're proposing to do, and we did work with the applicant and suggested conditional district for this, but that was not something that they were looking to do, was going to be additional work, and we understand that.
Okay. Okay.
So again, these are the things that are allowed in the CS district, but not permitted in ONI.
Correct.
Wow. And so if we'd have done a special use permit, then we could have locked it in?
Well, unfortunately, the special use permit is not identified as a mechanism to do this. So this was, this was...
But this has been a great idea to use something like this.
It's an expansion of a non-conforming use. So we, we could not bring this forward as a special use permit. I will say, staff did go out and look to see if there was a different use classification that we could give Nurish NC in terms of trying to help it fit into a community business district, for example, which would be appropriate here. And unfortunately, the, the size of the warehouse that was associated was just not something we could work with.
Mr. Waddell?
If we were to do a commercial services conditional district that was narrowly focused to the, the current use, as the mayor, Clifford, Councilmember Barnett, said, I mean, this is important work that they do, probably one of the best nonprofits in the region. What would that look like? What am I, what am I looking at here if I was just...
So typically, a conditional district, you can tie it to specific uses that are allowed.
Right. Which one? Which one on this table? Would I...
So they, warehouse and distribution center is what they are classified as.
So it'd be a CS conditional allowing warehouse and, and...
And, and distribution.
That would be something that would have staff support.
Correct.
Because of the additional work that was gone, that had gone into, and I can ask the applicant this, but the additional work and probably dollars and cents that would go into, to hiring somebody to come up with a plan, they did not bring that forward.
I believe, they actually do have a site plan, because we found this when they submitted for TRC. I think some of it was the community meeting, and I'll defer to Cindy, is the applicant's representative, and I think the other piece was also just not restricting future use of the property in terms of having as much flexibility if Nurish NC ever decided to sell the property in the future.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, thank you, Linda. Just I'd like to recognize the applicant.
Thank you very much. My name's Cindy Wolf, and I appreciate Linda's summary of the petition. Some of my slides are going to be very similar to hers, but I think even though this is a conventional rezoning, it's, the current use of the tract is not germane at this point in what we're asking for, but we do feel that that background is important to the efforts. As she said, the tract is currently occupied by Nurish NC, the organization providing healthy food to hungry children, empowering them to succeed in the classroom and in their community. They purchased that property, as she pointed out, in 2019, made some improvements in 2021, and have been serving this community since. The building is occupied by administrative offices, the walk-in groceries, storage areas for food goods, and space for volunteers to assemble that backpack program, other projects that they have. That's where she was talking about. We went to, back up, the zoning administrator, and we feel that this fit into the category of a grocery. It didn't, I guess, one of the options, rather than special use permit, because that's not on the list of uses in this district, would have been to argue the zoning administrator's interpretation, that would be a board of adjustment item. So that is also an outlet that we might have had. But basically, we wanted to touch briefly on how we got here, and as she pointed out, when they occupied, I mean, the word "social services," what does that mean? Most of us would think an office building, and it's in an office district, but this has always been the same use. And so unfortunately, when the 2022 Land Development Code was updated, that's what sort of threw this all into a little bit of an upheaval and the non-conforming use. So when they submitted a plan back earlier this year, just to add this storage building and pad for a new freezer, this is the point where that determination made the use warehousing and distribution a use not permitted in the ONI. But nothing has changed. So the petition is an attempting to insert a CS district into some other incongruent location. As you can see, we have CS right beside us. It's in the vicinity. There was the suggestion, certainly, that we alter this to a conditional district. And, but I guess my problem here was, that was intinuating that it might be more consistent. If you read the comp plan, this isn't consistent as warehousing anyway. So the, the problem that we had there is the suggestions of in guidelines, like infilling surface parking lots, you know, adding residential uses, connecting adjacent parking lots. These were things we couldn't do with the conditional district anyway, so we probably would have had a negative recommendation. And so as we're going through here, we just felt that it was, it was extra work that wasn't going to be accomplished by a positive recommendation, and it would hamstring them from future use. So not knowing what the future use might hold for the organization, that limitation was tough on coordination, certainly on costs for a nonprofit. That being said, this is the list that she put up there. That being said, this is the list that she put up there. We would, are now being considered warehouse and distribution center, but there are some less desirable other uses. But if you look at the site, the improvements that are on it, the improvements that they have made, you can really sort of knock out half of these uses that would be appropriate in a C S or approved in a C S in the future anyway. So basically, I guess what I'm saying, you know me well enough to believe that if I believed that the conditional use would have made a ton of difference here, or if this was a vacant tract, I would be here with a conditional district. This is an improved tract. It is an existing use. And so that's why we have chosen to, you know, move forward with the change of use, I mean, or with this conventional rezoning. That being said, we believe that heaven forbid Nurish just gets so big, they have to move somewhere, or that a hurricane knocks this and vacates this site altogether. There are provisions in the C S district, in the changes of uses and in our code that will protect, we believe, that corridor of Market Street, which is already used car lots and automotive businesses. So with that, the consistency chart acknowledges the split support based on the fact that the site is already developed. We appreciate that part. We totally agree with it. And it's not counterproductive to the transitional character and aesthetics of the vicinity. The modest non-support, sure, it does, it's not what the comp plan says, but it is a benefit to the community. I have Steve McCrossen, the director of Nurish with me today and Roy, Roy Worrell, one of the board members. The staff has done their job by recommending denial, but the planning commission saw fit and we hope that you do too, that this, this request is reasonable and in the public interest and that you have the power to approve this petition. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Are there any questions for Ms. Wolf? Yes, we have one, Mr.
Go back to the slide just before that and I was just trying to read what you had there.
Okay. So basically, if that building is there, the building's there, the parking's there, if it is a change of use, so it's not warehouse and distribution, it is one of these other provisions, it still has to go through the technical review committee. It still gets reviewed for traffic, for landscaping, for parking, all of those things. So my point is that if it were vacant, this would totally be different. Any of those uses could come forward and they could start fresh. But as an improved site, any change of use other than warehousing and distribution, which is what it is now classified, would go through a review process.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Rambor.
I, I look at this as the, the addition is more incidental to the, to the main use of the property.
Very much so.
And if anybody has ever been fortunate enough to work at Nurish when they were on Greenfield Street, they would be down here cheerleading this. That was the hottest place in the world and did as good a work as anybody in, in this state. So I, I'm certainly in favor of them being able to get what they need and it's one of those we'll shoot first and we'll aim later to figure out how to make this ordinance all work. So thank you.
Anybody else? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. This time I'm going to open up public hearing and ask if anybody in the public wishes to speak on item PH one. If they please come forward, state their name for the record. Madam Clerk, have you received any additional, there you go, any additional commentary? Counsel, do you have any additional questions? Okay. Seeing that I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for the wishes of counsel, I see that we already have a motion approved by Mayor Pro Tem Barnett, second by council member Waddell. Mayor Pro Tem, will you please read the consistent statement for the record, please, sir?
On it, yeah. I approve, I move to approve the proposed amendment to rezone property located at 3606 Market Street from O I Office and Institutional District to C S Commercial Service District and find it to be consistent with the relevant policies in the comprehensive plan. Based on the application's material and the information provided at the public hearing and in the staff report, and to find approval of the rezoning request is reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The proposed rezoning is consistent with the surrounding area.
Okay, very good. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passing unanimously on first reading is a motion to waive second reading. Motion made by Councilmember Rambor, second by Councilmember Joiner. Discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passing unanimously on first as well as second reading. That brings us to our next item, which is item PH two, which is an ordinance amending the official zoning maps of the city of Wilmington to rezone property containing 0.81 acres located at 3816 Market Street from Office and Institutional District to CB Community Business District. Again, I'd like to recognize our city manager, Ms. Haw, Ms. Becky Haw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this item will be presented by Hillary Taylor, associate planner.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. Public hearing number two is a general rezoning located at 3816 Market Street. The subject property consists of approximately 0.81 acres or 35,300 square feet and is zoned O and I Office and Institutional District. The site is located on Market Street between Darlington Avenue and Switchyard Lane and is currently occupied by a parking lot serving the adjacent property. This map shows the general vicinity surrounding the request and the images of the site. And, and these are the photos of the existing conditions surrounding the subject site, looking north across Market Street, looking south through the site from Market Street and looking east and west along Market Street. These are photos of the adjacent properties and land uses. There's an automobile care center and restaurant located to the north of the site across Market Street. There's an automobile parts store located to the west of the site across the railroad way. Church and healthcare services located to the northeast of the site and a construction company office located to the east of the site. As mentioned, the site is currently zoned O and I Office and Institutional District. The site is surrounded by C S and O and I to the north across Market Street, C S to the west across the railroad way, O and I to the east bordering the site and M D seventeen to the south across the railroad way. The subject property is located along a major corridor, regional parkway and conceptual green connection on the comprehensive plan's growth strategies maps. The comprehensive plan promotes compatible commercial development and uses along major corridors, as well as appropriate transitions between commercial areas and nearby residential neighborhoods. Rezoning from O and I to CB would allow for pedestrian scale office, retail and personal service uses, allowing an appropriate transition between the commercial uses on Market Street and nearby multi-twelling residential complexes. Staff believes the proposed zoning amendment is consistent with the recommendations of the Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan and that the request is reasonable and in the public's interest. Staff therefore recommends approval. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have and the applicant is here as well.
Are there any questions of staff? Okay. Thank you. This time I'd like to recognize the applicant.
Good evening. My name is Dave Spatrina, 1908 Eastwood Road, and I come to you with what I believe to be quite more simplistic than the last time I had, you had me in front of you. I know that as a conditional or as a general rezoning, you can't really take into effect as to what our plans are, but I do felt it was important because you should be informed as to what's happening within your community, as to not just the effort, but the design that we've submitted. You're looking here on our first slide and what we've done, if I could just go to the site plan, I've angled a structure, by the way, the turn lane has already been installed, the parking lot's already installed. This is the last phase of the redevelopment of the Pierceall Church property. But this building is about 8,000 square feet and it's modeled after the, if you're familiar with Mount Pleasant at all, across from the new Costco, the building and the exterior picks up a lot of the architectural details of both the existing church, the Pierceall Church there in the middle, and also kind of the more coastal effect of the dark and light colors. Again, I know that you can't take consideration what we're doing, but I did want you to see kind of what we had planned for the site as a complement and to kind of close out the redevelopment of that infill site there on the corner. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Thank you, sir. This time I'm going to open up the public hearing and ask if anybody in the public wishes to speak on item PH two. Madam Clerk, have you received any additional commentary, comments?
No, sir, I have not.
Okay. Are there any further questions from council? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for the wishes of council. We have a motion approved by council member Rambor, second by council member Andrews. Mr. Rambor, can you please read the consistent statement for the record, please, sir?
Yes, sir. I move to approve the proposed amendment to rezone property located at 3816 Market Street from the O and I Office and Institutional District to CB Community Business District and find it to be consistent with the relevant policies in the comprehensive plan based on the application materials and the information provided at the public hearing and in the staff report and to find approval of the rezoning request is reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The proposed rezoning is consistent with the area and would allow for compatible infill development.
Okay. Ready to vote? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passing unanimously on first reading is a motion to waive second reading. Motion made by council member Joiner, second by council member Waddell. Discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. Brings us to our next item business, which are ordinances. Item O one is an ordinance making a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $3,013 of the special purpose fund for the River to Sea Bike Way, Bike Way Ride and Brunswick Heritage Riverside Bike Ride. Again, I'm going to recognize our city manager, Ms. Haw. Ms. Haw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For this item, we have Abby Lorenzo, the WMPO deputy director.
Uh-oh, you broke it.
You broke it. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. The item before you, O one, is an ordinance to appropriate $3,013.62 to the Wilmington Urban Area Metropolitan Planning Organization's Bike Ped Committee Special Purpose Fund for the annual River to Sea and Brunswick Heritage Riverside Bike Rides. The source of the funding proposed to be appropriated is from the sale of 2025 River to Sea Bike Ride merchandise, day registration fees and sponsorships. The funds will be used for costs associated with planning for future year River to Sea and Brunswick Heritage Riverside Bike Rides, which include event insurance, portable restroom facilities, event T-shirts and stickers for purchase during the event and other miscellaneous supplies to support and promote the rides. Passage of the ordinance is recommended and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Abby, one of the, one of this bike ride, when are you going to conduct it?
So the River to Sea Bike Ride is held the first Saturday every May, starting in downtown Wilmington, out to Wrightsville Beach and back. And the Brunswick Heritage Riverside Ride is held the fourth Saturday of every September, starts in Phoenix Park in Navasa, traveling down through Leland to Belleville Riverwalk Park and back.
Okay, very good. Thank you. What are the wishes of council in respect to the ordinance? We have a motion to approve by council member Joiner, second by council member Andrews. Discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passing unanimously on first reading is there a motion to waive second reading on the ordinance? We have a motion made by council member Andrews, second by council member Waddell. Discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passing unanimously on first as well as second reading. That brings us to our next item, which is item O two, which is an ordinance making supplemental appropriation to the public improvements slash equipment fund from a New Hanover County Alcohol Beverage Control Board grant in the amount of $20,000 for the purchase of five mobile printers and six radars. This time I'd like to recognize city manager, Ms. Haw. Ms. Haw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For this item, we have deputy chief Hargrove.
Welcome, deputy chief.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem. Good evening, members of council. This ordinance is, is to appropriate the proceeds from a law enforcement grant from the New Hanover County ABC Board in the amount of $20,000 to purchase of five mobile printers and six radars. These mobile printers are required when issuing citations from, I E. citation, including alcohol violations. Also, these radars are tools used in traffic enforcement for violations such as speeding that can lead to others, including DUI and other alcohol-related offenses.
Any questions for staff? Question for the chief? Okay. Thank you, sir. What are the wishes of council in respect to the ordinance? We have a motion approved by council member Joiner, second by council member Spears. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passing unanimously on first reading is a motion to waive second reading. Motion made by council member Waddell, second by Mayor Pro Tem Barnett. Discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. That brings us to our next item, which is item O three, which is an ordinance making supplemental appropriation to the public improvements fund for a New Hanover Community Endowment Grant in the amount of $4,528 for the Police Activities League Program. Again, I'd like to recognize city manager, Ms. Haw. Ms. Haw.
And again, deputy chief Hargrove.
Okay.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
This, this is ordinance is for the purpose to appropriate the proceeds from the community grant from the New Hanover County Community Endowment in the amount of $4,528 to assist the Police Activities League. This is support the Activities League in the efforts to provide youth of New Hanover County with mentoring, tutoring, coaching through education, athletics and prevention.
Okay. Any questions for the, for the chief? If not, what are the wishes of council in respect to the ordinance? We have a motion approved by Mayor Pro Tem Barnett, second by council member Spears. Discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passing unanimously on first reading is there a motion to waive second reading? Motion made by council member Joiner, second by council member Andrews. Discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passing unanimously on first as well as second reading. That brings us to item number O four, which is ordinance making supplemental appropriation to the special purpose fund in the amount of $5,900 from the North Carolina Amateur Sports Grant for the purchase of athletic equipment. Again, I'd like to recognize our city manager, Ms. Haw. Ms. Haw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Amy Beatty, our Parks and Recreation Director, will be presenting this item.
Good evening again. The city has received a grant in the amount of $5,900 from North Carolina Amateur Sports. This ordinance will appropriate the grant award so that funds may be used to purchase sports equipment for the city's youth athletics program. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Beatty? If not, what are the wishes of council in respect to the ordinance? We have a motion to approve by councilman Rambor, second by council member Joiner. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passing unanimously on first reading is there a motion to waive second reading? Motion made by council, for Mayor Pro Tem Barnett, second by council member Joiner. Discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passing unanimously on first as well as second reading. That brings us to our next item, which is item O five, which is an ordinance appropriating funds received from New Hanover Tourism Authority in the amount of $42,900 for improvements to the River Walk Visitors Information Center. Again, I'd like to recognize our city manager, Ms. Haw. Ms. Haw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Dave Mase, our public works director, will be presenting this item.
Good evening, Mayor and council. The New Hanover Tourism Authority, which occupies the visitor center building that the city owns, came to us and asked if we could help them by air conditioning that building, which has long since been unconditioned. We said yes, and they agreed to reimburse us for those costs. So they, the work has been done, the building is conditioned, they have reimbursed us. We're simply asking you tonight, through this appropriation ordinance, to put the money back into the project from which it was spent. Be happy to answer any questions.
I think it was appropriate to put air conditioning in there. Thank you. And God bless those people that have been working over there. My God. Okay, we have a motion to approve by council member Rambor, second by council member Andrews. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passing unanimously on first reading is there a motion to waive second reading? Motion made by council member Rambor, second by Mayor Pro Tem Barnett. Discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. That brings us to our next item of business, which is item O six, which is an ordinance appropriating $176,264 for the Keenan Fountain Repair Project again. This time I'd like to recognize our city manager, Ms. Haw.
And again, Dave Mase.
Dave, I think about every other year, we get somebody in here that hits the fountain. We should just have a jump like Evel Knievel over it.
I'm going to try and go 12 months without coming to you again to discuss the fountain. fountain, but here I am tonight requesting that you approve appropriation ordinance for one hundred and seventy-six thousand two hundred and sixty-four dollars. It allows us to take funds that we've received from insurance proceeds, as well as some interest earnings, and put it into a project so that we can actually award a contract that we have a bid in hand for and get the fountain repaired so we can turn it back on. That's essentially what we're asking for you to do tonight. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Mays? Okay, Mr. Spears, I know you have a question, sir.
Dave, well, we were discussing the fountain in the multiple times that it's been hit, been repaired, as the mayor just stated. Was there not some discussion about potentially moving the fountain?
Yes, sir, there was. The recommendation at this point is to get the fountain operating again. In addition to that, we can start a process that we would evaluate the ability to have that fountain disassembled and potentially relocated, but the process to find out where or figure out where it's going to be is going to take some time. In addition to that, it's going to take additional capital dollars to move it, and we need to discover exactly how many, how much money it would take to move it and also go through a process to figure out where that fountain might reside in its resting point. So, in the meantime, our recommendation was, as I presented back, and I think in, um, in May, was to go ahead and get the fountain repaired and operating. It's been in disrepair going on two years now, and so this is kind of an interim step in that process, if you will, and we can certainly, based on council's direction, start the process to evaluate the possibility of disassembling it and where it might reside in the future.
Isn't this a little counterproductive? I would much rather disassemble it while it's broken than to fix it, disassemble it, and then find a location for it.
I certainly understand that point of view. I would, I would also just say that the additional capital, the, the capital dollars that would be needed to move it are not available in the current five-year capital plan. So, it kind of makes sense, let's not wait to have it operating again. Let's get it operating again, and then for the next capital budget, we can plan for that additional capital expense.
Okay, and so just for the public, for transparency, how much of the insurance claim dollars that we received is going towards this, and how much are we having to add in to make this repair happen?
So, that is still a, uh, a topic that is pending. We are not done with our negotiations with the insurance company. Our intent is to be made one hundred percent whole. We are not there yet. Currently, we have received a little bit over ninety-eight thousand dollars in change from the insurance company. There's a twenty-five thousand dollar deductible in addition to, that the city would have to pay in addition to that. The, the difference between that and what the bid price is, I'd have to do some math here, but it's, it's in the neighborhood of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, that, that difference is what we are currently trying to negotiate and work with our insurance company to make up, we want to make up that difference.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Waddell?
Basically, Dave, we're front-loading the capital and then trying to recoup the, the majority of it, less the deductible, after we made the repairs.
Precisely, yes, sir.
And Dave, ju- just, um, I know that was a much bigger fountain at one time. The, the remnants of the, that fountain, do we have them or are they gone?
I have no knowledge of where the rest of the fountain might be.
Okay. I mean, the photographs that you see, it was a much bigger fountain. Obviously, it was a magnificent fountain there at one time, but I get it. Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, what are the wishes of counsel in respect to the motion, to the ordinance? We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Andrews, second by Councilmember Waddell. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first reading. Is there a motion to waive second reading? Motion made by Councilmember Ravenbarke, second by Councilmember Joyner. Discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. That brings us to our next item of business, which is item oh seven, which is an ordinance making supplemental appropriations of two hundred and thirty-seven thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars from the North Carolina Parks and Recreation Trust Fund Accessible Parks Grant and fifty-six thousand three hundred and eighty-two dollars from the Public Improvements Fund for the replacement of the Fit for Fun Center Outdoor Playground. Again, I'd like to recognize city manager, Ms. Hawk. Ms. Hawk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and this item will be presented by Amy Beatty.
Good evening. The city has received a grant award from the North Carolina Parks and Recreation Trust Fund Accessible Park Program to replace the playground at the Fit for Fun Center. The playground was installed in two thousand and two and has not received a full replacement since then. The price quote for the replacement is two hundred and sixty-three thousand seven hundred and ninety-one dollars, and the grant award is two hundred and thirty-seven, six hundred and eighteen dollars. The remaining funds to complete the project are budgeted in the city's Parks Capital Maintenance Fund. The new playground will be fully ADA accessible with a rubberized surface, and it will be covered. If approved, installation is expected to begin this winter with an opening in the spring. I'll happy to answer any questions you have.
Are there any questions of Amy? Okay. What are the wishes of counsel in respect to the ordinance? We have a motion to approve by Councilman, for Mayor Pro Tem Barnett, second by Councilmember Spears. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first reading. Is there a motion to waive second reading? Motion made by Councilmember Ravenbarke, second by Councilmember Joyner. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. That brings us to our next item, which is item oh eight A, which is the ordinance appropriating three million seven hundred thousand for the Greenville Loop Trail Section Two Transportation Project, and then we have an accompanying item, which is item oh eight B, which is the resolution awarding a construction contract in the amount of three million eight hundred and sixty-four thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars to Wells Brothers Construction Company Incorporated for the Greenville Loop Trail Section Two Transportation Bond Project. At this time, I'd like to recognize our city manager, Ms. Hawk. Ms. Hawk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and with this item, it will be covered by Mike Niklikie, Engineering Project Manager.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. Before you tonight is an ordinance appropriating three point seven million dollars to the, as you mentioned, the Greenville Loop Trail Section Two Project, and this will be coming from multiple transportation bond projects and contingency funds. This is part of the city's transportation bond program, and it's the second section of an overall four point three mile Greenville Loop Trail, which makes a regional connection from both the Central College Trail to the River to Sea Bike Way. We do have a map up there in front of you that shows the various sections. The section that we'll be awarding tonight here is the one in yellow, and again, that is a one point six mile asphalt, I'm sorry, asphalt trail, includes ADA ramps, upgrades to the Bradley Creek Elementary. We're putting in a full traffic signal there, pedestrian improvements, also some utility coordination, drainage, and signage and markings. There's already been a one-mile section completed in red there along Holly Tree Road. There's another section, which is Section Three in blue, that is one point four miles. That is currently out for the bid purchasing right now, and we expect that work to start later this fall. And there's one more small piece that you see there in green. That's a point three mile section to connect along Pine Grove Drive. That will be constructed as part of the intersection work that will be, be bid out later this year. Also before you tonight is a resolution to authorize the award of this construction contract to Wells Brothers Construction Incorporated of Turkey, North Carolina, as the lowest responsible responsive bidder in the amount of three million eight hundred and sixty-four thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy-four cents. We did receive three bids for that project, and they were the low bidder. This appropriation will reconcile the current project funding gap and allow for the award of this construction contract and provide appropriate contingency funds. The project has a construction duration of nine months, and we expect to have it complete in the spring. Staff recommends approval of both these items and be happy to answer any questions.
It's been long overdue, and I know that we've been working on this for quite some time, and over the acquisition of right-of-way and working with utility companies and all the work that you folks had to do there. I mean, my hat's off to you. Congratulations, it's finally here, and this is an exciting portion of the trail, and it gets us closer to where we want a biking facility near almost every neighborhood in this town. So, that's phenomenal. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good work, guys. So, what are the wishes of counsel in respect to the ordinance? We have a motion approved by Councilmember Ravenbarke, second by Councilmember Andrews. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first reading. Is there a motion to waive second reading? Motion made by Councilmember Joyner, second by Councilmember Andrews. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. Now, let's go to the resolution awarding the construction contract to Wells Brothers Construction Company. What are the wishes of counsel in that? We have a motion approved by Mayor Pro Tem Barnett, second by Councilmember Joyner. Discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously. That brings us to our next item of business, which also has two parts to it. Item oh nine A is an ordinance making a supplemental appropriation in the amount of one hundred thousand from the Tree Mitigation Funds to the Alliance for Cape Fear Trees for volunteer tree planting and maintenance. And then the second part of it is item oh nine B, which is amended resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with the Alliance for Cape Fear Trees for volunteer tree planting and maintenance in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars. This time, I'd like to recognize our city manager, Ms. Hawk. Ms. Hawk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and once again, Amy Beatty.
Good evening one more time. This ordinance will appropriate fifty thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty-six and subject to future budget adoption, fifty thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty-seven to the Alliance for Cape Fear Trees for a volunteer tree planting and maintenance program. The Alliance for Cape Fear Trees has been a willing and productive partner of the cities for a number of years, promoting and preserving the urban forests through education, securing of forestry grants, and leading tree giveaways, to name a few activities. The accompanying resolution will authorize a new agreement to enhance the tree distribution, planting, and maintenance activities by the alliance. With the funding, the alliance will be responsible for recruiting, securing, training, and supervising of volunteers. This will include specialized technical instruction for tree planting and maintenance. The alliance shall provide the city an annual spending plan to the city, as well as biannual reporting on their accomplishments. Adoption of these actions is consistent with the recommendation in the Urban Forestry Master Plan. I'll try and answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Ravenbarke?
Amy, this is, good. I just want to make sure that the city is underneath this and that if anything should falter, we're there to pick up the mantle and go with it with regard to tree plantings and our, and our right-of-ways, medians, and that sort of thing.
Yes, sir.
I've read the MOU, I've read it all. I just want to make sure that I'm clear on it, because I'm, I'm voting for this, but I just want to make sure, because this, you know, we, we brag and advertise ourselves as a tree city, and I don't feel like we're, you know, giving up our right to do these things, or not the right, but giving up the responsibility, if you will, to a very good organization. But I just want to make sure that in the event that, that, that we're always there to come in behind and make sure that it gets done proper.
I think that that's a good and fair point of emphasis. The city's forestry program is not going anywhere. We will still be responsible for preservation and maintenance of the city's urban forest and our expenditure lines that cover those activities, including new tree planting, tree removal, tree maintenance is not going anywhere. Rather, this codifies a partnership that the city's had with the alliance and shifts some resources to them to enhance their ability to be a partner to us in being able to, for example, pay for background screenings for volunteers. And I think that the memorandum of understanding in the agreement outlines performance measures, and the city staff, forestry staff, and myself will continually meet with the alliance to ensure, to the best of our abilities, that those performance measures are being met.
Yeah, there was a great deal of, of verbiage about people, who's coming to do it and who's going to check and what have you, and that's terribly important. At the end of the day, I am terribly, you know, not concerned, but with regard to what gets put in the ground, being properly maintained, and while I've got you up there, I don't know if you're the right one to talk about this, but in years gone by, we had a policy in the city where when we asked someone to, to landscape, not just public right-of-ways, but, you know, on the right-of-ways in front of their development, that if, if it was a certain time of the year, that they could post a bond, like for example, planting now without irrigation, they could post a bond to guarantee that they would plant it in the fall of the year or the winter. Do you, you're looking at me like I'm talking Greek?
Not entirely, no.
Is that something that we still do?
I, I can't speak about projects requiring a bond. I, do you know that?
Not requiring, but if somebody wanted to, for example, in front of the Michael Jordan, uh, uh, medical facility
Clinic.
On Princess Place Drive, there are about fourteen, one, one or two-inch caliper trees that have been planted along there. One lives. One. And I know we went through that on Market Street, and it was because they had ordered the wrong, the wrong kind came in or something like that. But I don't see bags, water bags on some of these things. Those are the kinds of things that I want to make sure that if we're going to give this authority to another entity besides in-house, I want to make sure that those things get done.
And done correctly. I, I understand and appreciate what you're saying. Those projects are warranted. So, for example, if a private developer has planted something that the city's accepting in its right-of-way, we require a warranty period with that, and when it's turned over to the city, if those plantings have failed, then the city requires the contractor to go back and replant those. And when the city has a contract for new tree planting, again, we have a warranty period, be it twelve months, eighteen months, two years, depending where the contractor is required to come back and replant failing or dead or dying plants.
Okay, good. But wouldn't it make more sense if somebody's going to plant something in ninety-five-degree heat and it's not irrigated, to, to put that off until
Require a water bag?
And, and that's what I'm saying, they post a bond to guarantee performance. So, I know that's not what we're talking about here tonight, but while I had somebody up here, I wanted to bring that up, and I failed to do it
Your point's well taken.
At the agenda briefing. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else? Okay, that's good stuff. What are the wishes of counsel in respect to the ordinance? We have a motion to approve by Mayor Pro Tem Barnett, second by Councilmember Andrews. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first reading. Is there a motion to waive second reading? Motion made by Councilmember Andrews, second by Councilmember Ravenbarke. Discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. Now to the resolution. What are the wishes of counsel in respect to oh nine B? Motion to approve by Councilmember Andrews, second by Councilmember Ravenbarke. Any further discussion, Mr. Waddell? Mr. Waddell, did you have a?
I was trying to click the wrong button there, sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, we have a second to that by Councilmember Ravenbarke. Okay, all in favor of that, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously. That brings us to our next item of business, which is our resolutions. Resolution number one is directing the city manager to support fossil fuel-free investing strategies. At this time, I'd like to recognize city manager, Ms. Hawk. Ms. Hawk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I believe Councilman Joyner would actually like to kick kick off this item and then Martha Wayne, our finance director, will follow up from there.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to say that I'm excited that we're going to be considering this tonight and I look forward to the discussion and particularly the presentation from our staff. A little bit about the origins of why I brought this resolution forward. One of the things that we're all involved with as members of the Wilmington City Council is our affiliation with the National League of Cities, which is, excuse me, city council members from all across the United States are part of this organization. It sort of culminates each year when we go to Washington, D.C. and talk to our legislators and the federal government about what the needs of cities are. We talk about ours specifically locally with Congressman Rousier and Senators Bud and Tillis, but this is a week-long event that sort of happens nationally. The point of the story is we can involve ourselves in task force and committees and sort of see what our peers across the country are doing in their municipalities. And one thing that I've been following very closely is the work of climate action groups, how our local governments trying to address climate change. And so I found out about some divestment policies that some of our peers in other parts of the country and really all over the world, particularly also in Europe, are doing. And I spoke with our previous city manager about my interest in exploring that and seeing if we could do it here in Wilmington. And so I appreciate the lengthy conversations that I've had with your team in the finance department, with different folks in the city manager's office about what that might look to scale it for Wilmington. Because in addition to wanting to make this a policy that is going to be climate-focused for the city to make sure that our investments are divested from fossil fuels and are sustainable, we also want to make sure that it's something that we can do at scale, that we're not asking to do something too big too quickly and that your office has the capacity to actually enact this. So thank you very much for your work along the way and look forward to your presentation.
So what I want to do tonight is I'm actually going to take a step back and I just want to give a little bit of background because I know it's something we don't talk a lot about. What I wanted to do is I wanted to first start with where do our cash and investments come from? Our main sources are property tax revenue, sales tax revenue, and at certain points in time, debt issuance. So when we've drawn down some issuances and haven't spent the funds yet. The reasons that we maintain cash and investment balances are very important. Therefore, to meet the operating needs of the city, when unexpected needs come up, for example, we hope no hurricanes decide to come this year and visit us, but just in case they do, we would have funds available. And whenever we have debt proceeds, those are restricted for a specific purpose. This is a brief snapshot just showing kind of the various mechanisms that our cash and investments are in. You'll see in regards to this particular resolution tonight, you'll see commercial paper represents about 15%. You'll notice the largest amount is in the North Carolina Capital Management Trust, which is NCCMT government portfolio. It represents 31%, but approximately 48% of that 31% is restricted for specific purposes that is related to debt. Moving forward, our primary investment objectives. One, one of the things we really focus on is the preservation of our capital. We want to make as much yield as we can, get the highest return that we can from our cash and investments, but we also want to ensure that our principal balance is secure. We also always monitor to ensure that we have proper liquidity available to meet the everyday needs of the city and some unexpected needs that they arise. We work with authorized brokers. We maintain a list of financial institutions that are authorized to provide investment services. Those are comprised of banks, security brokers, dealers, and we evaluate those on an annual basis. I'm just going to briefly go through this slide. The next two slides are just showing the restrictions. We're restricted by North Carolina General Statute 15930 and it kind of limits the types of investments we can have because in the state of North Carolina, they want to make sure that, yes, we are getting yield, but we're also being very protective of the funds of the community. The current investment policy, we do have specific parameters in place. One of the things we want to do is we want to make sure we have diversification in our portfolio. We want no more than 25% of total investment portfolio to be invested in any single security type except for U.S. Treasury securities, money market funds, and authorized pools. And those are authorized pools that have been authorized by North Carolina General Statute. We purchase maturities so that they're staggered. No direct investment in securities is maturing more than five years from the date of purchase. We're trying to make sure that our weighted average is less than one year. We also make sure whenever we're reaching out to brokers that we are reaching out to a minimum of two brokers to make sure that we're getting the highest yield possible. And if, say, for instance, we reach out to brokers, we don't like what we get, we're not required to make a purchase at that time. And one of the reasons we are staggering our maturities is we like to match our cash inflows with our cash outflows. So as we mentioned earlier, property tax is one of the largest revenue sources we have. That means that typically our revenue, our cash and investments is a little bit higher in the third and fourth quarters of the fiscal year just because of timing when property tax is paid typically. And so what we do is we look to see when we have major cash flows, outflows for debt or payroll, and we try to match up our investment maturities with those outflows. What we wanted to do is when we were approached, we kind of looked at, okay, how could we potentially align our investment policy to what we were trying to accomplish, be a little bit more in line with the sustainability. So one of the first things we did was we need to define what fossil fuel is because there can be several definitions that were taken. So what we did was we did some research and we proposed these potential changes. We are looking for natural energy sources such as coal, crude oil, and natural gas. We're looking at the extraction of fossil fuels and we're also looking at the production of fossil fuels. So the strategy that we are proposing is that we know the city is committed to responsible financial stewardship. And what we're trying to do is we're trying to align this with a client-conscious decision-making with our investment portfolio. And we're also wanting to make sure we protect our investments and make as much yield. So when we started doing research, we thought the best way to move forward would be to focus on the direct investments we make and specifically direct investments related to commercial paper. And so our proposal is to exclude any investments in commercial paper that are issued by companies that are engaged in the direct extraction or production of fossil fuels such as coal, oil, or natural gas. Now, the purpose of the resolution tonight is not for you to approve our investment policy. This is for us to make sure that we're following the direction that is desired. So this resolution would actually direct the city manager to review and amend the current investment policy in support of the strategy of his sister strategy y'all vote to move forward with. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Mr. Rivenmark?
If you could go back to about four or five slides back, Martha, there was a, whoa, right there. On that top line, what are idel funds?
Oh, a specific idol.
Okay. I kind of thought so, but you could fill volumes up with what I don't know about this. I thought that was something new. Okay?
That was a very good catch and I apologize for that.
No problem, no problem. And this is, this is coming about as a result of Mr. Joyner's resolution?
Yes, he requested that we look at how we could potentially implement moving forward with fossil fuel, you know, trying to align the investment strategy with the sustainability policies.
Could you fast forward maybe two or three more? There was, I'll tell you when to stop. Right there.
Yes, sir.
These various funds, are they fairly liquid? I know you say you don't do anything more than like a five-year note or a five-year restriction.
Yeah, and we make sure that the weighted average maturity for all of our investments are less than a year. And then what we do is we're always looking at, we're always matching up our cash inflows and our outflows and monitoring, you know, what funds we need at what particular time and always planning for any unexpected items that may come up.
Are we locked in on these percentages in the various pockets of investment?
No, we have adjustments. And so essentially what we want to do is we want to make sure we have diversity in what we're investing in. We also want to make sure, and I believe that's on the following slide, excuse me, that we have no more than 25% of our investment portfolio in any single type of security excluding the U.S. Treasury's money market and authorized pools.
And these investments would be made to satisfy this particular proposal even if investment in other companies made more sense or was more lucrative?
What this particular proposal would do is it impacts the direct investments we make. So this really impacts the commercial paper that we're purchasing. We would still be able to potentially invest in authorized pools even if those authorized pools may or may not have fossil fuel involvement just because we don't, we're not involved in the direct purchase of what's included in those pools. So from this proposal, what it's mainly going to be doing is it's going to be focusing on the percent of our portfolio that's related to commercial paper that we directly purchase.
Okay. Thank you very much, Martha. Mr. Joyner?
Hey, Councilman Rivenmark, I want to thank you for those questions and add that, you know, those are some of the things that I talked about with finance staff because I certainly don't want us to be in a position where we're not making the smartest investment possible. I want us to be structuring our strategy in a way that aligns with some of our goals, particularly with our commitment to reducing greenhouse gas emissions, which we talked about at the agenda briefing just yesterday. And I guess I'll leave it, I'll leave it there at this point, but just to say, well, actually, the question I wanted to ask was, can you walk us through the process of how you request a financial instrument from our brokers and how under this policy, essentially, my understanding is you would frame it as saying, and we can't invest in this?
Yeah, so essentially what we're doing, whenever we are wanting to make an investment, one of the things we're doing is we're always looking to see what has the highest yield, what's making the biggest interest, you know, what gives us the biggest bang for our buck. So if we want to purchase a U.S. Treasury, if we want to purchase commercial paper, anything like that, what we'll do is we'll reach out to our brokers. We will reach out to, we currently are actively working with four brokers, and we will tell them, hey, what do you have that isn't maturing in, say, eight months? Give us the options. This is the dollar range we're looking at to invest, whether it's 2 million, 5 million, 1 million. We'll provide that information to the broker. Then the broker has a short window of time just because of when, how quickly you do have to make investments just because of trade deals. They will get back to us. We will not make a decision unless at least two people have responded. And then we will evaluate those responses. We're also always looking at, for example, what North Carolina Capital Management Trust has given us. What can we get from CDs? What is our checking account earning? But if we see something from the broker that we like, we will respond. It's a very short window that we have to respond. If the information they get back to us, if we're not happy with the interest rate that we're getting, the yield that we're earning, or if the maturities, they don't have anything that kind of aligns with when we're going to need that cash back, we will pass on making the purchase.
Okay, Mr. Waddell?
Has there been any analysis of the financial implications of this proposal? Specifically, is there any chance of it adversely affecting our yields?
We, whenever we were evaluating how best to implement this potential resolution as far as aligning with the fossil fuel-free, we looked, we thought about that and that's why we wanted to make sure that we're specifically looking at what we're directly investing in. A lot of times we can ask for, okay, do you have something else that's around that dollar amount and kind of evaluate from that standpoint. But we also didn't want to restrict ourselves from potentially being able to invest in the authorized pools, like, for example, NC class. So if we wanted to invest in NC class in the future, we wanted to have the flexibility to do that. And so that's why we were proposing wording in a way that would still allow us to invest in authorized pools that may have some fossil fuel holdings, but they're not ones that we can directly control what they invest in.
So is there any chance of it adversely affecting our yields?
We don't anticipate just because if something were to come back from the broker, we would, our response would be, okay, what else do you have that provides this type of yield?
Well, I just want to say I appreciate the work that I think staff has done on this at the audit committee and also appreciate Councilman Joyner's passion for this issue. It's something he's consistently advocated for. It's my position that this proposal distracts from the real core issues that face our community: homelessness, crime, affordable housing, infrastructure, creating parks, planting trees, and excluding entire sectors from consideration even just in the commercial paper reduces our flexibility, to me, and I think could limit returns that ultimately would go to support the city services. And we have fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayer whose money that we're investing to get the highest return possible. Further, I think climate policy is, should be best addressed at the state and the federal level. And here in Wilmington, our priority, certainly my priority, is in delivering results that improve the daily lives of our residents and what they need from us. So I'm opposed to this, but I do appreciate the hard work. I think that's gone into it thus far, but I think I'm prepared to stay focused on the fundamentals and invest in the things that are going to give us the highest return.
Anybody else? Mr. Joyner?
The only thing that I would say in response to that is, one of the things that I asked from staff was to look at our prior investments and to tell me whether or not, and to be prepared to tell us, whether or not we had had significant investments in the fossil fuel industry. And the answer to that question thankfully was no. There's not a ton of divestment that we have to do. In particular, this is back when I was working with Tony, so, and he's not here to speak to it, but, you know, we really drilled in on what we wanted to do as this, let me own this, what I wanted to do, because I appreciate that y'all are working in the direction of a council member here, as far as that definition of fossil fuels. And we talked about, in particular, at one point, we had investments in Toyota. Well, certainly, the Toyota Corporation produces products that are fossil fuel emitters. And so we had to figure out exactly where we wanted to draw the line because I think the question of how far back, how far do you pull this thread when we're looking at these mutual funds and things of that nature? Certainly, a top 10 city for population is going to have the staff and resources in their financial department that they can look at every single penny. We don't have that and I don't expect us to have that and I don't want to burden our finance department with that. I think this is an important, effective, and meaningful first step. And to the idea that this is something that is best left to the federal government and to the state government, I agree that the federal government and the state government have huge roles to play in climate change, climate policy, and climate action. The federal government's not doing it right now and lawmakers in Raleigh aren't either, so it does fall in our laps.
Mr. Waddell?
I'll just make one more, one more point. You spoke a little bit, Martha, about the kind of back and forth that the staff members would go to our brokers if we received something that wasn't high enough yield that was in alignment with this proposal and maybe try and go find something else. I think there's a real opportunity cost to our staff that is also part of our fiduciary responsibility to the people that we represent. And every hour, every minute, the city staff is spent screening for fossil fuel ties or whatever pet project some city council member comes up with. It's time that's not spent addressing real operational challenges that we see here every day and should be our main focus.
Mr. Barnett?
Did I hear you say that you would ask the broker to just kind of check to see if it was, okay, let me say it again. Okay, let me think. I understand that you were saying that you would in turn talk to the brokers and then when the brokers come back to us, you would say, okay, look out and see if you can find anything that we might be interested in. And is it really taking that much time away from what we're doing?
I mean, it's just one of those things where we reach out and then we would evaluate and then if it's something that we're interested in purchasing, we just need to make sure, like I indicated earlier, we have to have a quick turnaround just because of how quickly some investments are sold.
Right.
So, you know, it's just something when we're purchasing investments, we kind of focus on that to make sure we have the time and the turnaround. But it would be something that we, you know, if we do move forward with this proposal, whenever we're making those calls, we would go ahead and kind of indicate to the broker that we are trying to avoid or we are wanting to avoid commercial paper that is involved with the direct extraction and production of fossil fuel. is involved with the direct extraction and production of fossil fuel.
Okay, yeah, I like the proposal.
Mr. Spears?
Is, is communicating with the broker about our investment, is that not a part of your job?
I, yes, sir.
It is?
Yes.
So it's not like, you're not wasting time doing your job, right?
No, I mean, we, it would just be another question we would ask whenever we are proposing investments we would like to purchase.
You're not, you're not spending extra time, you're not doing this on the weekend, are you?
No, sir.
Okay. Not making the phone calls on the way home to the, to the broker about this, are you?
No, and this would, you know, like I said, this would just be something that when we're making the calls, it, it would be an added request with our broker. And then if they were to come back, we would just ask, hey, do you have anything else that has similar yield?
But within your work hours?
Yes, we, we, well, I mean, we always have to make trades during trade hours, but yes, they are during our, our normal workday.
Oh, during trade hours, okay, so that's even a shorter period of time, right? I, I'm just trying to, you know, Councilman Waddell says, you know, it's a distraction, and we shouldn't be, you know, we don't want you to do things that go outside of the, what's the word I'm looking for here? The job description that you may have, but if this is a part of your work and, you know, if, you know, it's a consideration by council, and there, there's not a loss. If, if there's something equitable or even that yields more money, and the options are there, you know, I don't, I don't want to put you on the hook to say you don't mind doing this, but I, I feel like you don't mind doing your job, and, and we all should do our job, so, just wanted to put that out there, and, you know, especially if, if we're talking about pet projects, pet projects, because there, there are a lot of pet projects that come up here, a lot of the times, and no one seems to worry about them unless they're opposed to them, so, but that has nothing to do with you, so just keep doing the good job that you're doing, thank you.
Mr. Ravenbark? Our staff has always been charged, our financial people have always, always been charged with our investment portfolio, and we only make that much. I mean, we do everything we can to bring everything we can in, but you made a statement just a moment ago, Martha, about you instruct the brokers to bring us stuff that we're looking for, and I just would worry that a broker might see something here that maybe doesn't align with what you've told him, and we'd miss out on something. That's all I was bringing up, that's all. And I know that you're not doing it while you're at the beach, I understand all that, and I can't believe that somebody would insinuate that that's what we think you're doing. So just keep doing your good job, but I appreciate it.
Well, Martha, in, in, in respect to the, to the portfolio, I know a certain amount of that is invested in this, with the state, correct?
Yes, sir.
What, what is that fund called?
North Carolina Capital Management Trust.
Thirty-one percent of that, correct? So, so if they're investing in fossil fuels of some sort, there's nothing we can say about that, is there?
Correct, that's why we are doing, are proposing direct investments, and we still want the ability, if a pool is authorized by the local government commission, to be able to invest in that pool.
Okay, I just wanted, I wanted, I would just wanted to be clear on that, that we are investing a significant amount of money into the North Carolina Fund, and that North Carolina Fund has the authority to, to invest in those particular pools, so there's nothing we can do about that. We're talking about the direct investment, and what would that incorporate, all of the rest?
That would incorporate, well, specifically for our holdings as of June 25th, that would be focusing on the 15%, but this goes back to the slide where our current investment policy says we don't want any type to be greater than 25%. So at no point are we going to have commercial paper that represents over 25% of our portfolio.
Which is goo, which is good investment policy, I, I applaud the conservative way that we look at that, and the state makes us do those kinds of things, and I really think that. So we're talking about a very small sliver of this entire pie, correct?
Uh, yes, sir, it can never be more than 25%.
Okay, all right, I, I, because it's, it's a much bigger pie than that, and I just wanted to make certain that the citizens that are watching this and are here tonight understand that there's going to be, some of this is going to be invested in investments that we have no control over, that may be investing in fossil fuels, but we have a very small portion of that that we're going to be handling here. And I would imagine that with any broker, that when they bring you forward a portfolio of, of investment instruments, you folks are going to always look to get the highest yield for it, and I'm sure they can do it in all different ways, and they can work through a lot of different companies in doing that. So I, I'm not worrying about that, because you folks have always met the mark in respect to the investment portfolio, we've never missed that, and I don't think this is going to be that big of a deal, but I, I, I appreciate you giving me more clarity on this, because there is, I, because I don't want to just, you know, I don't want people to think, well, you guys are investing anyway in this particular fund that's also are investing in fossil fuel, but that's totally separate of that, and we have to do that by state statute, so...
And, and one thing to note is our state does restrict what type of investments that we can have, and so we are limited by the state already in what types of investments they have, because they want us to protect the citizens' funds as much as possible.
Okay, all right. I, I was kind of concerned about that to begin with, but understanding now, a, a much better how that, that investment strategy works makes a lot of sense. Mr. Waddell?
What's the, what's the dollar value of the 15% commercial paper currently, as of June 2025?
Let's see. As of June 2025, it is approximately 47 million.
Sorry, say again?
Forty-seven.
Approximately 47 million.
Forty-seven million we hold in, in that commercial paper?
Yes.
What was our interest return on that last year, do you know?
I apologize, I do not have that information with me, I will, will need to get back to you on that.
Can you give me a, a round number, just shot, like shot from the hip?
Let's see. Our... I, I do not have that, I know our average yield is around 4%, and I am, hold on one second. I think the commercial paper is running, looking at this quickly, as of June 30, the commercial paper was somewhere around the 4% as well.
So maybe just, just shy a $2 million return, it's a good return for the, for the taxpayer, if we were to get axed on that at 10%? Not saying that's going to happen, but don't know that there isn't any chance of adversely affecting yield, and you're talking about $200,000 of lost revenue for the taxpayer, potentially. So there, there is, there is an op, option, I mean, we might be more money, but, but there is, there is the, the, the chance that we could, that we could lose money moving into this, we wouldn't have as much to spend on all the things that make this city great, so... Just trying to understand the numbers, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay. All right, ready to vote? One of the wishes, Council, respect to the resolution of a motion approved by Councilmember Joyner, second by Councilmember Spears, any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that item passes five to two. That brings us to our next item of business, which is item R2A, which is a resolution authorizing the city manager to establish standards and provisions regarding the creation and management of social districts. And then item R2B is the resolution establishing the Social District Advisory Committee. At this time, I'd like to recognize our city manager, Ms. Hall, Ms. Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and for this item, we have Deputy City Manager Chad McEwen.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Member of City Council. Item you have in front of you tonight overviews the standards and provisions related to how we would proceed with reviewing social district requests that are applied to the city. As you'll recall from prior presentations, we outlined what a social district is, essentially created through general statutes in 2021. In generalist terms, a social district allows alcohol purchased within the district and an approved footprint. It's purchased in a participating ABC establishment, be taken out of that establishment into the social district, and potentially into non-ABC participating businesses, and I'll go over those definitions in a little more detail in just a minute. There are others, parameters under which this alcohol can be sold and consumed in the district involving single patrons, no, no more than two servings of beer or wine, one serving of a drink containing liquor, and through statutes is specified that no brown bagging or outside alcohol is allowed. Here list the enabling statutes that were referenced in terms of the approval from the General Assembly in 2021. In 2021, kind of in the context of time, one of the, the main drives from the General Assembly standpoint was to help with the recovery related to the COVID pandemic and helping businesses recover from those, the, the impact on small businesses. There are also other several, several other benefits related to the emphasis of why social districts were approved. As of March 2024, there were 55 approved social districts within the state of North Carolina. As of January 2025, 15 of the largest cities in the state had at least one social district approved. This map reflects March 2024. Just point out here, the closest ones to us are Laurinburg, Fedville, and Whiteville, all have social districts that have been approved by their local government entities. Background, how did we get to this point in terms of considering these, these terms and conditions? The city received in October of 2024 requests from the Brooklyn Arts District Collective, which is a business group of about 20 local businesses, including several bars, restaurants, and breweries. In creating, in reviewing the request, it was a collaborative effort that was generating guidelines based on community engagement, involvement with the, the collective, as well as Wilmington Downtown, Inc. There was about seven or eight city departments that were directly involved in creating the guidelines for what was ultimately held, the pilot program in the first three Saturdays of, of February 2025. Feedback related to that pilot, pilot program on those first three Saturdays was pretty much overwhelmingly positive and supportive of the effort from the business residents and visitors that participated. There were some complaints, some learning opportunities in, in regards to things that could be learning opportunities moving forward for permanent social districts. One of the big takeaways that we had was that we needed to have a more robust notification effort and public engagement effort, and I'll get into a little more detail about that. One concern that we had that did not materialize was calls for service above the level of service that the city already provides and litter, and, and to, to the compliment of the folks in the Brooklyn Arts District, we had no issues related to calls of service or trash issues. Transitioning from the, the pilot social district program, we looked at permanent guidelines, we, we looked at several benchmark cities throughout the state that had social districts, they kind of fell into two different distinct pots. First pot being Greenville and Charlotte, which had multiple districts, more of a, a micro-level approach to having these social districts in a smaller confined area. Larger urban area center-city approach involved a single district approach, which are present in Raleigh, Durham, Greensboro, and Fedville. We modeled the conditions and standards that you have in front of you after the multiple district approach, based on our understanding that there may be more than one area of the city that asks for these social districts to be approved. Eligibility, obviously confined to the city limits in terms of this body reviewing and approving those requests. The businesses must be contiguous, the footprint of, of the social district must be contiguous, and 60% of the businesses within the footprint must agree to participate. It must include three or more brick and mortar businesses with permit, ABC permits, as well as two for, two or more food-oriented establishments. These definitions are within the standards and provisions and deserve a little bit of explanation. Eligible business establishments are plainly businesses that are within the footprint of the proposed and potentially approved social district. A non-participating, non-permitted ABC establishment is a business that does not sell alcohol and is, is not agreeing to allow alcohol purchased within the district to be brought, brought into their place of business. A non-participating permitted ABC establishment is obviously an ABC establishment that is not agreeing to allow alcohol purchased in their establishment to leave premises and enter the social district. Participating, non-permitted ABC establishment is a business that does not sell alcohol, but is allowing alcohol to enter their premises from the social district, or another ABC is, or ABC establishment in the district. A participating permitted ABC establishment sells alcohol and is allowing alcohol to leave their premises. The application process outlined in the standards and provisions, pretty, pretty detailed here in terms of the overall steps, I won't go line by line, but first of all, the, the applicant would need to gauge interests and kind of go through the district, the proposed district, and find out what level of support is there to make sure they can hit those benchmarks related to the 60% participation. They would provide us a draft proposed district boundary, next submit a pre-application material, which outlines the participating ABC establishments and the proposed or anticipated non-permitting businesses. Pre-application, there, I would point out there that there is a non-refundable $1,000 fee that would be part of this process. One slide further along talks about in greater detail this Social District Advisory Committee. Once that pre-application is submitted and reviewed by staff, it would go formally to that Social District Advisory Committee for review and recommendation to, to this body. A draft signage plan would, would need to be submitted and reviewed by the Social District Advisory Committee, as well as a draft management and maintenance plan, which outlines how the social district would function. Community engagement, again, learning from, from the, the pilot program that was held in February in the Brooklyn Arts District is a big component of, of this application process, and the next slide will, will go over that process that we've, we're proposing. Next step would be to submit a formal application based on recommendation to the Social District Advisory Committee, reviewed by this city council, an ordinance would be proposed, public comment would be received, and a formal vote would be held up or down to approve the social district. Upon approval of the social district, the North Carolina ABC Commission would receive notice of that ordinance and put it on file, essentially being the last step of the, of the approval process. Pre-application approval, again, signatures of at least 60% of the businesses in the district. We do require, as part of these standards and provisions, that all property owners within 500 feet of the footprint of the social district, proposed social district, receive notification that a social district is being proposed, as well as the dates and times, locations of any public hearing, public meeting related to the social district being proposed. Three letters of support. Community meetings are required to be held by the applicant or sponsor of the requested social district, and signage within the district proposed, proposing the footprint and information regarding the public meetings would be posted, and an advisory member, advisory committee member would need to be designated at this point in time in the process. Compliance and annual review, one of the main objectives and tasks that the conditions and standards outlines for this Social District Advisory Committee is ensuring annual review and compliance of any issued ordinance related to the approval of a social district. The social districts are permanent, but there are parameters under which they could be revoked, suspended, or amended. In terms of suspension and revocation, that final process of, of making that permanent would have to be done by this body in a reversal ordinance, disbanding the, the social district. In a scenario where there is a imminent need issue, the city manager through this, these policies and procedures would have the ability to temporarily suspend a approved social district until such time as an item for consideration can be added to a city council agenda. If the city council ultimately rescinds an approved social district, we would advise the ABC Commission, as well as all participating ABC establishments within the subject social district. Membership with the Social District Advisory Committee is outlined above, essentially all the voting members would be staff members of the city, and then the non-voting members would be outlined below. Several of our partners and stakeholders in this process would be non-voting members. One thing to point out, as if we get multiple requests for social districts, the, this advisory committee would grow by one participating, non- advisory committee would grow by one participating, non-permitted, and one participating permitted establishment member for each social district added, just so there's a, a voice in the room, seat at the table, so to speak, for each social district on that committee. Operational plans would be submitted as part of this process. It kind of outlines how the social district, how the applicant would, and participating business would manage and operate the social district within that footprint. Essentially, our proposal is the same proposal we had under the pilot program, is that the city would continue to provide the same level of services in the area that we, we do normally. All other services above that required level of service because of the social district would be the cost and responsibility of the social district itself. Operational plan also would include information to the ABC establishments, signage, staff orientation, the cups, labels, and customer do's and don'ts. Non-participating businesses would receive from the, the applicant signs that say their business is not allowed, their business is not allowed alcohol to be entered, to enter into their business. Cleemar demarcation of the district bounties would have to be provided. That was one of the challenges that we saw with the Brooklyn Arts District is the, the linear north-south orientation of that district had a lot of cross streets, and one of the things we had to do was make sure that there was clear signage there to make sure that those east-west streets that crossed were not part of the social district in terms of how people left the district and, and went outside areas that were, were not permitted. All these responsibilities related to the operational plan will be the responsibility of the applicant. Next steps, if approved, establishment of the committee is the next agenda item. As the mayor mentioned, these are, are companion items, this item as well as the next one. We do have an application in hand from the Brooklyn Arts District for a permanent social district that assuming, a couple of different things, assuming tonight it's approved, the parameters and the committee, and assuming that they can meet all the benchmark timelines for advertising, getting the letters out, getting everything approved, we tentatively have that scheduled to be on the August 19th agenda for your, your consideration. With that, I'll, I'll take any questions you might have.
Any questions for Chad? Okay. Okay, Ms. Andrews?
Chad, you, a couple of slides back, you talked about three letters of support required right there.
Correct.
And who are those letters supposed to be from?
It could be from a, I will be specific. So for example, WDI, DBA, Chamber of Commerce, individual businesses within the district could all provide those letters of support. Someone, I guess, a, a stakeholder, so to speak, someone involved in, in the issue either by proximity in the district or in the general business community.
Okay, that just, it just seems pretty meaningless considering, I mean, a lot of these businesses are getting together and saying they want to do this, so getting three letters of support doesn't seem like a very high bar from people that are already interested in doing this.
Well, I think one thing we learned with the Brooklyn Arts Pilot Program is they, they were very organized, they did a great job, but they also relied heavily on WDI. WDI supported that effort and worked very diligently to make it a success. I think that was, the three letters of support was kind of a way of making sure there's other support structure in individuals or groups that support that effort and that initiative, I think is the, the reasoning behind putting that there. But you're right, I mean, it's, a letter of support doesn't necessarily mean you're going to show up every Saturday to help make, make sure everything goes smoothly.
Mr. Jordan?
When we look at our, at all the other cities, I was starting to say pure cities, but man, they really range in population sizes as well across the state that are doing this. When we look at what they're doing, have we modeled our standards and procedures for steps to establish a social district on that, or are they just sort of doing them as one-off ordinances, piece by piece?
Good question. A lot of, for example, the ones at the bottom have very large geographical areas. For example, some of these have a 40-square-block footprint. Those, from my, my research, looks like those were city-driven. The cities developed that footprint, developed that plan. The ones that, on Greenville, I think also had theirs more city, city-oriented, but they have multiple districts. Ours is a kind of a hybrid. The way we've designed this is that we're, we're going to be reactive to these requests. We're not going to go out and jump and, and propose an area so much as an area proposed that they want to be included or considered as part of a social district. So to answer your question, ours is, the way it's structured is, is unique in terms of other social districts, in, in at least my research, that it's reactive to a, a request rather than proactive to a geographical area.
And I, I think reactive is really the operative word here, and I can only speak to the, the one other place on this list that I've lived before. I went to law school in Raleigh, and I know that the downtown sip and stroll program that they have, I mean, I don't think that it's, you know, a straightforward, well-accepted proposal because you've got the downtown area in Raleigh, and then you've got Glenwood Avenue, which is like the bar district, the social scene. I'm sure there's rivalry and competition where those bar owners want to have that policy in place. So that's what gives me, that, that's what makes me a little bit nervous about this, is competing factions of clusters of, of bars and restaurants are going to be coming at this from different angles, trying to, I mean, candidly take each other's business.
Well, and, and you always have that component of a ABC establishment that, that does not agree to participate. They can still sell alcohol in their establishment, they're just not allowing alcohol that's purchased in their establishment to leave. They can still operate as, as normal. Obviously, alcohol purchased at a participating ABC establishment can't enter that business. You can't take alcohol from one to the next. So there is a parameter there where if you're in a footprint and you don't agree, you don't have to participate, and you can still conduct business, you know, as normal, you're just not participating in the, in the approved social district.
Okay. That, that's all I have for right this second. Thank you.
Ms. Spears?
Chad, can you go back to the slide where you talked about the social districting project, Brooklyn Arts District, where, where there were no complaints about trash or cost of service or litter or something like that?
Yes, sir.
And I recall having a conversation with a gentleman who, who lived in the area and called me. We had a conversation, and I think he called several other, several other council members and, and complained about, you know, finding the gentleman urinating on his trash can inside of his apartment. That's a complaint to me. The other thing that, of course, we, I'll, I'll just come right out and say, you know, I'm opposed to this because I don't, I don't feel like it, we're being cognitive of or considering the community and, and the ramifications of, of what can take place by this free-for-all of, of alcohol from one establishment to the other for, just for the sake of economics. So, and if, I know I'm not mistaken, but we've, we've had stories within the past week of situations downtown with youth, the, the threat of underage drinking, lawlessness, and things of that nature. So if we can't maintain it downtown, how can we maintain it anywhere else in the city? Is it not a concern when it's in a community?
Absolutely. This just sets up the parameter under which you would consider it. Each request would come to the, the city council, and you would consider those requests individually and based on their own merits. If there's a, you know, there, there could be a scenario where one has requested and the, the community comes out en masse against it. That's why we focused heavily on the public notification process to make sure that the public is not caught flatfoot or surprised by a proposed social district. So we created the flexibility in, in these conditions and standard, standards to, to make sure they're applicable to each request. They're not guaranteeing anything. They're, in terms of an approval, they're guaranteeing a process that would be followed.
Well, this, this process looks a little uneven. If, if you're talking about you, you need to send letters or, or letters of communication to anyone 500 feet within the business, but it still doesn't talk about, and, and I'll use the Brooklyn Arts District as an example again, someone who's drinking from 12 to 5, gets in their car, drives around the corner and, and smacks a car or smacks a kid or someone else. So, you know, even that example, a lot of people within that community had no idea. They weren't, they weren't contacted about it. I talked to them, they, they expressed their displeasure with what was, with what was taking place. And so I just, I don't, and I don't even see in this advisory committee where there are community members that are on it. You know, the, the people that are, are provided are either they work for the city or they're in the business community. They're not citizens. They don't have a voice to say, hey, we don't approve of this. You know, it's, it's really business-leaning, and it is reactive. So I, I mean, I, I, that's all I've got for now.
Mr. Porte?
Yeah. Hey, Chad. My question is, in your research, did you find a city that maybe started the social district but then gave it up? And if so, why?
I, I did not find any social districts that had been rescinded, that had been approved by a local government.
Okay.
They, they have varying degrees of, of oversight and compliance. Obviously, the ones that are, the larger ones, the Durham, the, the Greensboro, the larger geographical ones, the Raleigh sip and, sip and stroll, those are city-driven, city oversight, much more proactive since they're, are city programs. So they have a more of a, a more direct structure in, in the oversight from a staff standpoint. Ours would be the advisory committee, obviously made up of, of city staff, but that's not to say, Ms. Spears, that a citizen that lives in that district couldn't bring a complaint or concern to that committee and, and have it addressed. So to answer your question, Ms. Barnett, there was, I didn't find any social districts that have been rescinded, that have been approved.
Okay. Then part of my question would, I guess, speaking back on what Councilman Spears said, was there any consideration given to including a person that lives in that district, a seat on the, the board?
We, we could certainly do that, and that's a good point. We, to make sure we have a, a global perspective in terms of the, the participating ABC establishment, the participating non-ABC establishment, to have a, a resident perspective on that committee certainly could be.
I think that's, that's, I think that's critical. Okay. And it is going from, right now it's still 12 to 5.
This does not involve a specific request. Each of those districts, when they apply, will have to provide you, provide us with the information as to what their, their request in terms of daytime, footprint, operational plan, management plan, all those things will be in the individual applications they, they provide us.
Okay. So the, the, what we're voting on now is just the framework.
The framework. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Waddell?
Yeah. Chad, to me, it looks like you put a lot of guardrails, a lot of thought. None of this seems, seems knee-jerk to me, so I appreciate the work that, that you and staff and, you know, whomever else have, have done to this point. I guess, to kind of boil it down, what we're really doing here is we're creating a process to advance an application that someone would bring forward that's been vetted by this advisory committee made up of, of city staff and whatever else the, the makeup is, to then ultimately come before council for approval, right? Kind of like a, kind of like a rezoning.
It would be the exact process we followed for the pilot program where an ordinance is, is proposed, and it would be the requirement, statute requirement that public comment has to be received from the app regarding the proposed social district.
If we, if we vote this up today and we approve it, there's not, we're not approving a single social district in, in the city of Wilmington.
Correct. You're just approving the framework.
The framework. All right. Thank you.
Ms. Andrews?
Yeah, and I, I agree with some of the concerns about the makeup of the advisory committee because, you know, I know that Councilmember Waddell was expressing concern on an earlier item about, you know, use of staff time to pursue a particular topic. This is a very expensive advisory committee.
It is.
And so, you know, I agree with some of the concerns about, you know, maybe getting some, some citizen voices on there, but I also, I had asked in an earlier session that we, we had talked about this subject, I had been approached by Jane McDonald of the Cape Fear Coalition about wanting to be involved in any advisory committee. So for anybody who doesn't know, the Cape Fear Coalition, they were formerly called Cape Fear Coalition for a Drug-Free Community. They, they dropped the Drug-Free Community because they focus on alcohol as well, which some people don't consider a drug. And, you know, her day job is she works with Coastal Horizons Center for Prevention Services, and she's got a lot of knowledge about best practices for social districts and, and, you know, keeping, keeping the guardrails and keeping alcohol out of the hands of minors. And, and so I, I would really, really appreciate if she would be, and, and I don't care about voting, non-voting, because I don't think it's meaningful really at all with this committee because, you know, we're, we're really the ones that are going to be doing the voting, so.
Anybody else? Mr. Barnett?
Yeah. Chad, can you? Can you go back to the dates again? I think I saw something saying like August 19th. Did you, what, what were those dates again, please?
Um, the only dates I had in there, I think, were related to the local context of how we got to this point.
Chad, I think he's referring to when the first application might be ready to come before.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
That's the, that's on the, next to the last slide. We anticipate that we would potentially have your first application from the Brooklyn Arts District at the August 19th, meaning, meeting contingent upon their ability to meet all the requirements of the application process, assuming you approve the application process.
And, but I'm reading you have an application in hand.
We have an application in hand. We do not have a fee, but we've got everything else. They've not sent the notifications out. We've generated the, the, the 500-foot property owner list. I've not provided that to them, but just to, just to see how many's on there, I've, I've generated that list. So we, we've got everything queued up to help them meet that timeline, but we're going to have to see about the advertising requirements of, of getting that on the agenda.
Mr. Jordan?
I'm looking at step seven of your steps to establish a social district, and it talks about signatures from at least 60% of businesses within the district. I mean, I can conceive of businesses that, I mean, is this retail businesses with a storefront? Is this businesses that it's a warehouse, but there's not really any customer interactions that are done on-site? Somebody who's operating an LLC out of their backyard? I mean, how are we considering who does and doesn't get a vote in this from that perspective?
In terms of that initial canvas, we would ask that a, a list be provided of the quote-unquote "businesses" in that district. We would take a, a very conservative approach to what a, a business is and make sure that they're, if they're a non-residential use, I would consider them a business.
Ms. Spears?
So Chad, you have an application in hand when an application doesn't even exist yet?
I have a, a letter from the Brooklyn Arts District folks requesting the, the approval, I used the application, it's requesting the approval of a permanent. I used the application, it's requesting the approval of a permanent social district. Um, it is not a, by the form of this, these standards and provisions, an actual application, but it is an express request for a permanent social district in that area.
Right. And, and did you say the requirements had already been checked? So, the communication had been done, the, the letter sent out?
That's not been done yet.
None of that's done? Advisory board is already together?
They've got a lot of work to, to get it on that August 19th schedule, so.
Thank you.
Serena Ray, this is a, this is a committee that you're creating so that when we do get requests for the possibility of putting a social district, which by the way is, is allowed by North Carolina General Statute, and we've had comments from a lot of people since that statute was passed about social districts. So, that gives us kind of a, of a, of a footprint or an outline as to the things that we'll be looking for. Ultimately, the decision is the city council's. Time, dates, all that stuff, correct?
Yes, sir.
So, it gives you guys the op- opportunity to evaluate it thoroughly with the police department, because I'll leave having on the police department like I did last time. Can they enforce it or not? Times of day, parking, and requirements, um, to make sure that all of the neighbors are notified thoroughly.
Yes, sir.
So, nobody's surprised by this. And that, uh, we then will evaluate it. You'll make the presentation. I'm sure the people that will have the district or would like to have the district will come before the city council, and I'm sure neighbors will come before the city council telling us, we don't want it. And ultimately, it'll be our decision as to time, date, place, whether we voted up or whether they voted down.
Yes, sir.
I think it's a good process based on the fact is we're going to consistently get demands for this based on the North Carolina General Statute, because I know since the statute was established and voted on by the General Assembly, we've had comments and have had people ask about this. I think it's a fair, fair way, whether we agree with it or not, it gives us an opportunity to evaluate it and take time in doing so. Correct?
Okay.
Okay. That's all I want to know.
I got a question, ma'am.
Wait, wait, hold on. Ms. Spears, you're next. Thank you, Ms. Spears.
Mayor, I just want to add in the fact that the last time we brought this up, the police department initially was opposed to it because they didn't have the capacity to, to handle a, a social district. Uh, they, they did change their, their stance, but initially, they, they were opposed because they didn't have the capacity. And, and we often talk about being down 30 officers. We often talk about, you know, needing more officers in MSD, so, uh, let's not stretch ourselves too thin.
No, I, I don't disagree with what you just said, Kevin. I, I mean, I remember, we've had multiple, um, ask for social districts, and Chief Williams at the time says, I don't have the capacity to handle them. And he was fair in, in what he said, and he shared that with meetings I was in with members of, uh, Chamber of Commerce, Wilmington downtown. He was very clear about this.
Unless we're going to take the mounted units over there.
I think we changed a little bit on this was the time of the day that it was done, and it was a, it was a pilot program to see how it would be evaluated. And I'm also with, with you. I, I mean, I, a lot of things have got to be answered in respect to somebody bringing a social district forward. My thing has always been parking, uh, and the, uh, make it certain that we have ample parking for people if you're going to go into a social district, to be able to park cars and not take up parking spaces in those neighborhoods, which also is impacted, as well as making certain that we do have enough officers and having the chief of police evaluate that and tell us whether they can or they can't, because the other thing is, and, and you're right, you have issues downtown and you can't take care of them, and then you open up a social district and then people up there walking around doing that, it could create problems. I'm, I'm, I do think it's fair what the staff is coming forward with in regards to evaluation of the pro, of the process, and then we make the ultimate decision. Uh, yes, Ms. Andrews, I'm sorry.
Yes, I was, um, I, I noted that there's already a, a motion to approve by Councilmember Waddell, and I was wondering if he would accept, since I realize we're not voting on the committee until the, the next item, but the committee is formed in this, in what we're voting on in this item, and would you accept a friendly amendment to accept, uh, a member of the, uh, Cape Fear Coalition as a, an ex officio member?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Awesome.
How many members on the board again? Could you go back?
Um, there's, the way this is written, there's, um, four. With Councilmember Andrews' request, that would be five, and if we added the, um, member of the, uh, the residential member, that would be six ex officio members.
One, one, one community member?
Well, what I would propose is-
Is, is that a non-voting member or is that a voting member?
That would be a non-voting member.
Uh, I'm opposed anyway, so it doesn't matter.
My motion is amended as, uh, Councilmember Andrews, uh, proposed.
Okay. All right. Okay, get, un readiness. I've got an un readiness. Um, just so, for clarity, okay? This is a social district advisory committee. If we voted, if we vote not in favor, what happens to this?
If you vote not in favor of this item, uh, we would not have the, the ability to review any request or the parameters to review any request for a social district.
Okay. Um, then I would also ask then, as an amendment, would you consider adding a person of the community as a part of the voting membership?
Yeah, ultimately, it, ultimately, and I see, I, I understand the, the, the thought process there, um, I do, but I think the voting membership as it stands is fine, and the, a non-voting membership as well. What I don't want to see is, you know, we, we add multiple more people as voting members, they don't show up to these meetings, everything languishes on the vine and, and, you know, nothing comes through as it stands right now with Councilmember Andrews, uh, requested alteration. I think it still moves things forward ultimately to come in front of us to vote yes or no. So, my motion stands.
Okay. And just for discussion, um, I don't think that a person who lives in that community would be an individual that says, I'm not going to go to the meeting, I'm not going to be involved, one. Number two, I think that it's really critical that we have that person, um, involved in the process. You know, that's, that's, that's what I'm trying to look sure, to make sure that we've got somebody from that community actually really involved in the process, you know, even before it comes on.
Well, why don't we do this since everybody's concerned? And, and I, and I don't disagree with the community aspect of it. Most of, every developer has got to have a community meeting, so whoever's going to request a commu-, uh, the social district, you can have a community meeting and invite the community there.
It, it's actually a requirement.
Yeah. So, it's a requirement, no matter what, to est-, to establish what the district's going to look like, what you're going to do, the hours of operation. So, it's part of the process here. So, the community is going to be engaged in this, plus the letters that go out 500 feet from this particular, um, district.
For example, the, the footprint for the Brooklyn Arts District is proposed is, is over 450 individual properties.
More than we do for rezonings.
Yes, sir. It's, it's a large footprint beyond the actual footprint of the social district, so it's pretty robust.
Yeah. And, and I agree with that just because of the fact is people will be outside of the streets.
Sure.
And we should be a little bit more onerous in this process, um, because of issues that we've had in the past, but also the opportunity that we can shut these things down if they get out of hand, or if we have a bar owner that is doing something crazy there, or we have issues that we have seen before, we can shut it down automatically. Is that correct?
Correct. And that, to, to get to the point of why the voting and non-voting, in, in my opinion, was important is, if there is a decision that needs to be made to recommend to council that a application needs to be suspended or revoked, um, we need to make sure that it was, our thought process was, we need to make sure there was objective input to that recommendation, and it's, it'd be very difficult for, um, participating businesses in that to be objective, quite honestly.
I agree. I just want to have the right to be able to shut it down if we need, because sometimes we come and come, and, and I'm saying 95% of the bar owners are good people, but we have individual bars-
Sure.
-that sometimes create issues that the police department shares with us, and if we want to shut them down, it's an act of Congress, and if we want to shut down the social district, we should be able to do so as quickly as possible if we have an issue there. I didn't, you know, that's just my take on it. Okay. All right. Mr. Spears, I'm sorry. You have a minute.
I'm just going to say this, and then I'm going to leave it. The, the advisory committee is, is not diverse as it states now, and if you add one non-voting member, that, that's not a, a severe impact. We see that all the time up here. Uh, I voice my concerns about a lot of things, and the majority of this board just goes in the manner that they want. So, um, and also the 500 feet, and, and we talk about the, we, Councilmember Waddell is, is often concerned about taxpayer dollars and the, the, you know, the impact on the taxpayers and, and citizens of this community. But then, in this instance, he talks about members of the community not showing up, not being present, not having an opportunity to serve on the board. And, and I think at every council meeting, uh, Councilmember Andrews pretty much begs members to participate on boards and committees, and we don't have an overwhelming response to that. So, now there's an opportunity to do such, and, and we don't want to do it. We just want to add one lowly member to, to a non-voting membership that's not going to have any impact on what's taking place in their community. For the sake of what? Because ultimately, that's what it's about. It's not about safety. It's not about the concern of the community. It's not, it's not even about the makeup of the community.
We have a motion on the floor. We have a motion approved by Councilmember Waddell. Second by Councilmember Iambark. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That item passes five to two. That is a resolution, or now we'll go to the resolution establishing the Social District Advisory Committee, which is R2B. What is the wishes of council in respect to the committee? We have a motion approved by Councilmember-
Well, I think the advisory committee would need to be, as, as Councilmember Andrews proposed, that was reflected in the previous-
Yes. That's the way I understood it.
Yeah. That's my motion.
We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Waddell. Second by Councilmember Andrews. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes five to two. Okay? That brings us to our next item, which is item R3, which is a resolution amending city council's rules of orders, Rule 6, public comment period. At this time, I'd like to recognize the city attorney, Meredith Everhart. Ms. Everhart?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Mayor Proton, members of council, this is the, um, amendment that we've discussed in, in previous meetings with you to, uh, that will change the system for public comment to allow for more participation in public comment. It will reduce the period from five minutes to three minutes that each speaker is allowed to speak, so that 10 people will be able to sign up for the 30-minute public comment period, um, instead of the, the current number, um, which is only six. And so, it, they'll each have three minutes, three minutes to speak, and, um, also that the city attorney, I'm sorry, that the city clerk will be, um, uh, responsible for putting up a sign-up sheet or having a sign-up sheet available beginning 30 minutes before each council notified meeting to allow for additional speakers to sign up after the deadline for cutoff of, of noon on the Monday prior to the meeting or the day before the meeting. And that way, people can sign up when they get here, so when, like, people who did not show up tonight, uh, if they don't show up, then you could go in order of those individuals down that list of people that show up at the meeting.
Okay. Very good.
I'm glad to take any questions.
Any questions, Meredith? Ms. Andrews?
Yeah, there was just a typo. I, I talked to Meredith about it.
Yes, ma'am. Um, there, there is a typo in the revised version that says, that says three minutes, but it prints a two. It is three minutes, and so I'll fix that in the-
No, no, I think it should be two minutes. It's a, it's, shall be limited to three minutes with a single extension of no more than two minutes.
Oh, sorry. Then no more.
So, it's, it's spelled out three, but then it's two in parentheses, so it needs to be spelled out two.
Yes, the, and I'll fix that, that in the, um, in the official version, original that I get, Madam Clerk.
Okay. Very good. All right. Oh, sorry about that. Mr. Waddell?
I just real quickly want to commend Councilmember Andrews for kind of driving this forward. I think it's a, um, it definitely is going to increase public engagement and, and provides for, I think, a, a much more smoother transition, so, um, appreciate your tenacity on bringing this, uh, and, uh, to us.
Joyner?
Still have the provision that speakers are requested to state, uh, their place of residence before they begin speaking?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? What is the wishes council in respect to the resolution? We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Iambark, second by Councilmember Andrews. Any discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes six to one. That brings us to our next item, which is item R4, which is a resolution revising the membership of the Convention Center Advisory Committee. At this time, I'd like to recognize the city attorney, Ms. Everhart. Ms. Everhart?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Um, this membership and I, I'm, I'm sorry, this resolution, and I'd open it to the membership of the appointments committee as well to speak if they would like to, is, it comes from the appointments committee in that there's been some difficulty on the Convention Center Advisory Committee filling the particular Convention Center hotel slot that is supposed to be specifically for the Embassy Suites Hotel that's attached to the Convention Center, and there is another slot that is on the advisory committee for just a hotel district hotel year, and this would just make the position that is for the Embassy Suites specific position into another one of those general hotel year, hotel year positions in the Convention Center District in order to make it, um, hopefully easier to fill that slot.
Okay. Very good. All right. What are the wishes of council in respect to the resolution? We have a motion approved by Councilmember Waddell, second by Councilmember Joyner. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously. That brings us to item R5, which is a resolution amending authorization to file condemnation actions for acquisition of right-of-way and easements for the Independence Boulevard and River Road Roundabout Project. At this time, I'd, again, like to recognize the city attorney, Ms. Everhart. Ms. Everhart?
Yes, sir. We'll be asking for council to remove this item from your agenda. It doesn't need to be voted on or postponed to a different date. We've been able to resolve the issues, um, that required us to bring this back to you.
So, we have to take a vote, formal vote, or we just-
Uh, yeah, just a vote to remove it from the agenda.
We have a motion to remove this from the agenda. We do have a motion by Mayor Proton Barnett, second by Councilmember Iambark. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously. This concludes the regular agenda. Are there any others to be brought forward by our city attorney?
We do have a closed session when it's time for that, Mr. Mayor.
City manager?
No, sir.
Okay. Madam Clerk? Mr. Joyner?
No, thank you.
Waddell? Mr. Barnett?
Yes, um, I had the privilege of celebrating a birthday on Tuesday, and I think the thing that I'm learning now that I'm just a little older than 70-
A lot older.
... is, um, the idea of, um, it made me lose the thought. The idea, the idea of, um, just taking care of each other, you know? That's, that's, I think it's, um, where I'm growing up and learning is that, you know, we got to be kinder to one another, and I hope that that passes on to everybody, even the people that you accidentally come across. You know, they can use your smile, your kind word, um, your nice gesture. That's it.
Well, I thought that you were going to challenge Mr. Waddell to a, to a, you know, a handstand contest right here in front, since you wish birthdays, birthdays.
I would, but I got a-
Cold right now.
Okay. Got you. All right.
Okay. I'll let him do it at 71.
Okay. Mr. Iambark?
Just wanted to, uh, welcome, uh, Becky here tonight. I wondered, I was looking forward to meeting her dad, but he had enough good sense to get out of here, so tell him to come back again. Thank you.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ms. Spears?
Pay attention to what's going on all around us. Pay attention to your candidates. Pay attention to what's going on in local government. Pay attention to what's going on in national government, state government. There's a lot of movement, not necessarily in the right direction. So, we can't wait until October or November. Make sure that you are registered to vote. Make sure you are knowledgeable about who you're going to vote for. Make sure that what people say today matches what they say when they're asking for your vote. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion to go into closed session pursuant to the provisions of the North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven, A and three, and A six, in order for the city council to, one, consult with and provide instruction to the city attorney regarding potential legal claims, including the case of City of Wilmington versus Joseph H. Graham and wife Melissa H. Graham, file number twenty-four C V S thirty-six-eighty-six, and City of Wilmington versus Properties of Oleander LLC and United Community Bank, file number twenty-four C V S fifteen thirteen, and two, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of prospective public officers or employees. So, we have a motion made by Mayor Proten Barnett, seconded by Councilmember Waddell. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously. The closed session will be held in council chambers. Everyone is asked to leave the chambers at this time. At the end of the closed session, council will reopen its public session from this room. Thank you.